Call the meeting to order. It's gonna be on TV here in a second. All right. Okay. Before we begin, I have a couple of announcements I want to make. First of all, I want to introduce a new board member, Sheri Mortis. This is her first meeting. She's glad to sit in and take part of this, and so I'll announce her in a little bit later. We also have retirement. And Tom Clark has served the city of Des Moines since 1997. In the last 10 years, 2002 to 2013, was a member of this board, the zoning board of adjustment, and he just retired. And so I wanted to say a couple of words, and I talked to Tom just a little bit ago. He said, "Keep it under 45 minutes." So, just want to... We have a plaque prepared for him, and we're not going to see it because they're not on TV, but I'm going to read off what it says. It says, "Thomas Clark, Sr., City of Des Moines, 1997 to 2013. In grateful appreciation for the many years of service and dedication toward giving us a better Des Moines, was signed by the community development team, Michael Ludwig, Eric Lundie, Bert Drost, Mike Kelly, and Sue Ann Donovan; and by a grateful member of the zoning board of adjustment, Brooke Rosenberg, Cindy Smith, Linda Westergaard, Jake Christensen, Mel Pins, and Bill Gray." It's dated April 24, 2013. So, Tom, we're going to give this to you, and hope you have an excellent and fun retirement. And there's one other retirement that a good friend of mine that's worked for the city of Des Moines for the past 40 years is retiring tomorrow. George Davis, president of the Southern Hills Neighborhood Association, and longtime member of Des Moines Parks and Rec, is retiring tomorrow after 40 years, and so wish you a great retirement as well. So, with those out of the way, I want to greet everybody. Good afternoon, and welcome to the monthly meeting of the city of Des Moines zoning board of adjustment. This board has power under Iowa law and the zoning ordinance of the city of Des Moines to hear requests for variances and exceptions from the regulations in the zoning ordinance, conditional use permits, and appeals from the decision of the staff and the administration of the zoning ordinance, and to make decisions in such matters. This is an open and informal meeting. It's currently being recorded. Board members have received a copy of the agenda and staff reports. Copies of these are available in the trays over here on my left by the door. We should have a full board today, and I'll introduce our members. Starting on my left, we have Jake Christensen. Next to him is Mel Pins. Next to him is Linda Westergaard. On my far right will be Brooke Rosenberg. Next to him is Cindy Smith, and next to her is Sheri Mortis, a doom board member. And welcome, Sheri. We're glad to have you on.
Thank you. Glad to be here.
My name's Bill Gray. Representing city legal, on my left is Michael Kelly. Representing city staff, we have Bert Drost, city planner, Eric Lundie, city planner, and Sue Ann Donovan, the zoning enforcement officer. The board is required to base its decision in each case upon the criteria established by law for the type of relief sought by the applicant. The law applicable to each case is identified in the written staff report. If the facts as determined by the board demonstrate that the criteria established by law for granting the relief have been satisfied, then the board must grant the relief. Otherwise, the board must deny the relief. All speakers are requested to focus their comments upon those facts that demonstrate whether or not the criteria established by law have been satisfied. Each appeal will be announced in order, and the staff will present a brief explanation of the appeal. Any written comments received by the staff prior to the hearing will be distributed to the board or otherwise identified. All speakers are requested to speak from the podium over here on my right, and to begin their presentation by giving both their name and address. The applicant or representative of the applicant is allowed to speak first, and will be allowed 10 minutes to present their appeal. Anyone else present in support of the appeal will then be allowed five minutes each to present his or her comments. Anyone present in opposition to the appeal will then be allowed five minutes each to present his or her comments. The applicant then will be allowed three minutes for rebuttal or other closing comments. The meeting will then be closed to public comment, and the board will deliberate... deliberate the request. You threw a new one on me there, Bert. Deliberate the request and make a decision. If your appeal is approved, we ask that you wait until tomorrow to go to the permit and development center at the Armory to apply for any building permits. Items listed on the consent portion of the agenda will not be individually discussed and will be considered for approval in accordance with the recommendation in the staff report unless an individual present or a member of the board requests that the item be removed from the consent agenda and separately considered under the public hearing agenda. The decisions of this board can only be appealed to the Polk County District Court. If you believe you have been harmed by an error made by this board, your only remedy is to seek relief through the district court within 30 days of the filing of the board's decision in order. If you believe that zoning regulations applied by this board are wrong, you may petition the city council to change those recommendations. All material written or otherwise used today as part of any presentation will become a permanent part of the record and will not be returned. If you have cell phones on out there, we ask that you turn them off or at least put them on vibrate because they tend to be very disruptive to the process here. If we need a break, we'll be taking that around the 3:00 or 3:30 time frame. As I mentioned, we have a consent agenda items we're going to listen to. Bert, you've got some changes you want to discuss first?
The first one, item number four, it's an appeal at 1801 16th Street, the former Cassidy School building. I believe there's going to be some people here to speak about that one, so I want to ask if there's anybody present to address...
And you're here to speak in opposition?
Yeah, so number four will come off the consent agenda. And then, number 13 is an appeal at 1811 6th Avenue. It's for a carriage house at the back property line. They need relief of the setbacks from the north side property line and the east rear property line, and then they also need an exception to the minimum required drive aisle width. After further consideration, staff feels this could go on the consent agenda. All of the neighbors that we've heard from are in support, and we feel it would be a good project, so we'll let the board decide if it's...
Is there anybody here to speak against item 13? And that's for exception and variance at 1811 6th Avenue? Can you all entertain a motion to move that to the consent agenda?
Mr. Chair, I move that we move item 13 to consent.
I'll second.
It's moved and seconded. All those in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries six to nothing. Anything else, Bert? All right. As I mentioned, we have a consent agenda that we vote on as an entire block, and there's seven items on there, so I'm going to go through them. The first one is item one, an exception at 2608 East 25th Street. Item two is an exception at 2220 Morton. Item three is an exception at 3120 Southern Hills Drive.
Item number three actually was withdrawn.
Oh. What?
Number three was withdrawn by the applicant already, so...
Oh, I've read all the way to the bottom, so we don't have to worry about item three. Item five is a special permit and variance at 1214 East 15th Street. Item six is an exception at 15 Glenview Drive. Item seven is an exception at 826 East Dunham. And item 13, that we just moved into the consent agenda. Is there anybody here present that is here to speak against any of those items that I just read off? Yes, sir.
I'm against that one.
Yep?
I'm against that one.
Okay. No problem. We'll move that.
That's number seven.
Seven, Dunham. Is there anybody else here to speak against any of those items that we just read off? So, item seven will move to the public hearing agenda along with item four. Does any of the members of the board have any issues with anything on the consent agenda? I'll entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Mr. Chair, I'd make a motion to approve the exceptions, special permits, and variances requested on items number one, number two, number five, number six, and number 13, subject to the staff recommendations as presented.
Will you hear a second?
I'll second.
It's moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries seven to nothing. So, if you're here for any of the items that we just read off, they've been approved. You're welcome to sit and watch your government at work, or you can enjoy the rest of the afternoon and have a nice day back today. Okay. Let's start with item four. It's an exception at 1801 16th Street.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, Eric Lundie, senior city planner. This item is a request for exceptions with regard to both the setback required for the school building that's being proposed, and those setback adjustments would be from both the north and from this property line here where it adjoins the residential area. In both cases, it's within the exception level of appeal, going 17 feet closer than the 35 feet that would be required under the requirements for both schools and church institutions in residential zones. The other appeal is with regard to parking. In residential districts, off-street parking is required to be outside of any front yard setback. In this case, the district requirement is 30 feet. They're proposing to go within 15 feet at both Allison and then in this area along Jefferson Avenue. So, those are the appeals that are really under consideration. The school is proposing to build... raise the existing building that's on the property and then redevelop with a school that would serve both pre-kindergarten and a alternative middle school program called the MAC program, and I'll let the appellant describe those for you if you're interested in what the detail is of that. So, there's kind of two categories of use in the building which have separate needs in terms of parking and in terms of bus loading and so forth. So, one of the reasons that parking is becoming a setback issue is because they're proposing what would be beyond our normal minimum requirements for parking in terms of number of spaces in order to allow drop-offs for pre-kindergarten children where the parents would come in and park to drop off their children, and that way they wouldn't congest the surrounding street system. So, they are actually proposing a number of spaces beyond what we would actually require as a minimum under the zoning ordinance. This is maybe a more zoomed in to help you get a better feel for what's there. This is the existing school structure along 16th, and you can see the current bus drop-off. I guess most recently it's been used again as for some school programs. For most of the first decade of 2000, it was used for administrative offices. Previous to that, it was actually an alternative middle school, which is part of what's being proposed again. This is looking to the east where the setback area would be along Allison Avenue. So, you're looking east into the Chautauqua Park residential neighborhood from 16th Street. This is looking east at the south end of the current building, but also where the proposed parking area would extend along Jefferson. So, this is the home that would be directly east of the site along Jefferson Avenue. You can see that they've currently got parking there which is screened. What you don't see is there's actually an alleyway that sits between this property and the school property, which is an outlet for an east-west alley. I can show you that again on the map if you're not understanding that. This is looking from where Allison and Chautauqua Parkway come together at the northeast corner of where the site would be. So, you're looking to the southwest at the current building. And this is panning a little bit to the left of that even, so more directed at south, more directly south at that same location. And then this is looking more southeast at that same location, so you can actually see Chautauqua Parkway curls around to the southeast, running east. Basically, this area to the left of my pen is going to remain undisturbed because I think they're trying to save that... There's a significant grove of mature trees there that they're trying to preserve. I think some of that will be affected, but most of it will be kept in place. This is looking straight south from Allison Avenue into the current parking lot and the school site. You can see this chain link fence here is a chained-linked area around where parts of the building will be built. If you zoom in closer, looking to the east, you can see the proximity of the neighborhood, and then this is again that kind of that groved area of trees. And then this is looking to the southeast where the building will again come closer than the 35 feet kind of in this area. This is, if you... Right across this fence is that east-west alley that I mentioned that outlets back between the school site and that house to Jefferson Avenue. If I can get Bert to zoom out a little. So, they're basically trying to use a good portion of the property to stay as one level, which is more efficient for the proposed operations, I believe, to stay at one level. So, the current school is three levels in some places. So, setbacks wouldn't be as much of an issue, of course, if they built multiple stories on the building. So, I'll let them make that argument, but my understanding is pre-kindergarten really under code... Building code can't be on another level other than the first level. Middle school would be in this portion, and then this would be kind of a center administration that would serve both portions of the school. This parking to the north would be for the middle... For the pre-kindergarten, this would be for the staff for both schools, for both operations. And I guess this would also serve for visitors for the middle school. There isn't anticipated to be nearly as many visitors for that portion as there would be for the pre-kindergarten. The area that's encroaching into the setback is this to the north, this area, and then the other area where it comes in off the building is this area. Otherwise, it's generally conforming to the setbacks. And then from the parking perspective, you'll see this dash line right here is where the parking setback would normally... I'm sorry, that's the building setback. There's another smaller dash line here that might be harder to see. It would be the parking setback. So, this area right here, these seven spaces are being proposed that would project into that, and then this area up here, four, five, six spaces up to the north would project into that setback based on the proposal right now. To give you a sense of those elevations, the buildings that are projecting into those setbacks, this is the north elevation. So, you'd be looking from Jefferson to the north at this side of the school. It's kind of hard to see how that wraps around. I'm sorry, this is looking from the north. This is the administration portion. This is the part that would project closest to Allison. I'm sorry. I stated that incorrectly. And then from the south, the portion that would be close to the property line on the southeast corner is this portion over here. And my... I talked to the designer. This color is different because it's supposed to show that it sets back further. It's actually the same color brick proposed for the whole building. And my understanding is it will be entirely brick and glass materials on the facades with the flat roof design as you're seeing. There may be some alterations to the design from what you see here when it gets down to final design, but conceptually, this is the type of design they're going with. Staff's view of that is that we want to make sure it's a palette that is compatible to the neighborhood. We don't necessarily want them to build it in a historic fashion. It needs to represent the period that it's built, but it needs to blend in terms of its palette so that it isn't... It doesn't stick out in the neighborhood, I guess, is the way to look at it from staff's perspective. So, we believe that the proposal concept is within that, and we have a recommendation that it kind of followed that compatibility. So, when you look at our overall recommendation, we are comfortable with the character that is being preserved with both the projection of the parking and the building into the setbacks. One of the things we would like to see is a slight adjustment on the south so that that parking stays... Note that it wouldn't come any closer than this front of this house. Right now, it's projected to come out about four feet. We're thinking that they can probably figure out how to pull that back enough to get that to work. But if there's some other complications with regard to traffic and getting the driveway and the alley to work together, there's some spacing issues that might come into play there. We're okay with what's being proposed as long as it sits west of the driveway, which would pull it away from that house so that that view shed would be preserved. So, when you're looking at the area, the bird's eye view of it...
Yes, that'd be helpful.
Right now, that house sits about where the tip of my pen is.
Okay.
So, right now, those stalls are fairly close being over here. Now, if they... We asked them to come up with a design where they would flip it to the west. If it projects, and they have to have it project to make the number of spaces work for their staff and keep it segregated from this alley that's just between the house and the site, then I think we're okay with them getting the relief they requested if that's absolutely necessary. We met and asked them to take a look at a redesign that could make everybody happy, but I'm not sure what they were able to come up with, so we'll see what they present here. I did speak to some neighbors, so you're going to hear some comments, I think, with some other concerns about traffic and access to the site. Those are things we generally look at as site plan items. I can tell you that the traffic staff, engineering staff, has requested some distribution of trip data so they have an understanding of whether they need some left-turn lanes on the entrances. If they can justify two entrances on the north, I think traffic really would prefer to see one and kept away from the 16th Street to allow the most queuing to occur. Of course, they want to avoid pushing trips out into the neighborhood if they can. When people have to wait for queuing, they may take the path of least resistance at that point and drive into the neighborhood. We want to avoid that. You can't prevent all of those. You can just encourage them not to do that through the design. So, our traffic is going to ask for the types of trip distribution based on the pickup and drop-off times, that type of thing. So, we'll get that analysis as part of our site plan and take that into consideration if any traffic controls are warranted around the site, and that usually gets recommended then at the site plan administrative review. I'm not sure if there's really anything about their relief here that has any bearing on that. There might be some relationship or some slight relationships between some traffic things. We looked at the line of sight here for this intersection. What's being proposed is outside the normally required vision clearance. There's not a lot of trips expected to go through there, so we're not looking for anything extraordinary other than our normal requirements on vision clearance there.
Eric, can I have a question?
Yes.
With the flat roof, where are the air conditioning units?
I don't know if they've designed those in yet. If they're on the rooftop, we require that they be screened. If they're tall, like above 30 inches, they have to be kept out of setbacks as well.
I'm just wondering...
That's a question for the designer, I guess.
Okay. I'm just wondering about the noise. I mean, that's a pretty big, big structure, and if the units are on top, I was concerned about screening and about noise to neighbor, you know, where it sits in relation to...
That's a good question for the designer. At this point, I guess they probably haven't designed that specifically, but let's say they put chillers on the ground next to the building. If those are visible from the street, we want them screened, that type of thing. Sound-wise, I guess that's a good point, and I don't know if we would necessarily have anything from a noise standpoint that we would enforce through our zoning that I can think of, but it's a valid question. Hopefully, they've designed that.
Usually, when we look at site plans, don't we see like this is where the garbage is and, you know, this is the structures where the garbage will be? I don't... I just... I'm just having trouble visualizing where that would be here.
Yeah, I think that you'll probably see it in this area. It looks like their loading dock area is right here. One of the things that was mentioned to me was the importance of being able to maneuver their trucks to come into the site in this parking lot. So, I think if you look at the current site, it's tucked in this area too, but we do require those to be enclosed as well under our standards as part of the site plan. They're not asking to appeal in any of those standards, so I guess I didn't focus on that. Had this been an appeal to say, "I don't want to screen my dumpster" or something, then I think we would have had more detail on that.
I have another question, Mr. Chair.
Jump right in.
Couple of questions. Do you know if this is a year-round school or a September-through-May school, and then do we have any idea of enrollment? Or do they anticipate that that may change with the new school?
I'll let you ask that of the appellant. Again, the school's a permitted use, and so I'm not sure. I guess those are valid in terms of trying to understand the function of the site perhaps, but I think you have to look at it as this could be something that shifts again in the future, but the building's still going to sit 17 feet from the street or 18 feet from the street. So, I guess I would ask the board to view it in that way, that they'll have the flexibility over time as they have in the past to shift how they use this. The way the zoning works is as long as it's within the standard curriculum of the district. You know, we're not putting any type of trade school here or non... You know, it's not a school for... It's a school for kids basically pre-K to 12th grade at the most, so if it was a college or something, a trade school, it wouldn't be allowed in this zoning. So, I think they're fair questions asked. I don't want to tell you not to ask those questions. I just want you to look at it in terms of it could change over time. But do ask the appellant what the current plan is so you understand.
Mel?
Eric, you mentioned that there's an alleyway that's kind of a defining factor for the site and area. Could you point that out between the conceptual plan and the aerial?
It was actually not in their sketch originally, so I was going to... That probably is best seen on the aerial.
Sure.
And we did a little research to make sure that that was indeed to serve as an alleyway. It might be. Bert, to zoom in. It's actually shown on the county records as incorporated into the parcel.
Into whose parcel, though?
This is the east-west, and then the outlet goes to the south. So, you see it outletting here. This house actually has a driveway to the garage off of that directly. So, one of the concerns, they could conceivably combine those and develop it as a shared alley access and access to their parking, but I think their preference is to segregate them for their... You know, because that's going to be their staff parking there all day. It's not going to be parking where they're coming and going and getting a lot of eyes on it at all times, so... It was actually not in their sketch originally, so I was going to, that probably is best seen on the aerial.
Sure.
And we did a little research to make sure that that was indeed to serve as an alleyway. It might be. Bert, to zoom in. It's actually shown on the county records as incorporated into the parcel.
Into whose parcel, though?
This is the east-west, and then the outlet goes to the south. So you see it outletting here. This house actually has a driveway to the garage off of that directly. So one of the concerns, they could conceivably combine those and develop it as a shared alley access and access to their parking, but I think their preference is to segregate them for their, you know, because that's going to be their staff parking there all day. It's not going to be parking where they're coming and going and getting a lot of eyes on it at all times. So if people are circulating through it, they don't really need to be in there. That always adds a security concern.
So Eric, if I'm looking at this arrow correctly, the address of 1515 Jefferson, are there two houses on that parcel, then?
No, this is a garage.
That's a garage back there. Okay, so that grayish-blue house we saw in the photo next to the school is there.
Yeah, that's right here under the number.
Okay. So if for some reason that house and garage weren't there, could that alley then be closed on the north-south?
If you look at the greater alley, greater area, it does, I don't think it's heavily used, but there's some properties that access off it. There's another narrow point here.
Because otherwise, it'd be a dead-end alley, right?
Yeah. The bigger problem is if the city has to maintain it, we prefer just to vacate all segments of it.
Got it.
Right now, I think that would be a challenge.
Yep, got it.
Any other questions for staff?
I did want to mention, we want to make sure that any construction is in compliance with building codes, a site plan that would be approved by the permit center. We do want them to follow the general concept that they presented here with their application in terms of design and exterior materials. And then, again, we're asking that they shift that parking on the south back, but if they say today that that's going to be difficult for them, we're okay with granting the setback as requested, but we prefer then to have the spaces west of the driveway to make that less of an impact for that house to the east.
Thanks, Eric. Applicant or representative, the applicant?
Doug Odie, representing the Des Moines Public Schools, 1917 Dean Avenue in Des Moines. Thank you for this opportunity today. I would like to, a little bit of a background, say that over the last thirteen years, the Des Moines School District has invested a little over $450 million in building new schools, updating schools, and renovating schools. Recently, the Board of Education approved the concept of an additional $70 million of bonds to continue this effort in the school district. The Cassidy replacement project would be part of that upcoming $70 million bond that the Board will look at selling in the near future here. The district has been working with Wells Plus Associates on the design team to design the building footprint and the site layout of the project. What you have in your exception package is still pretty much essentially what we are looking at, but I might provide a couple of updates to you if I could on that. Since the original concept, we have reconsolidated the central office area, and that has allowed us to move the east wing of the building, that's up by that tree area, twenty feet further to the west, which will help preserve more of that space up there being untouched and be able to save, I believe, most, if not all, the trees up in that area. The second thing I would note is that you'll see that the parking layouts in this plan are somewhat different, and we have been working with staff and we met with Eric, and we did look at redoing the staff parking lot adjacent to the residential property, as Eric was talking about moving the approach drive more adjacent to the alley and bringing the parking spots further to the west. And this shows, and we would still like to pursue with permission, the opportunity to maintain that exception for parking on the south side for these six stalls that are there. We're trying to do our best to maintain the parking count that we can, where we have other school facilities in the district. Someplace, we get a lot of street traffic, and we're trying to alleviate as much of street traffic as possible during those park pickup times and so forth. I would note that the district has held two meetings with the Mont Dame and Chautauqua Parkway Neighborhood Districts. That dialogue continues. One of the neighborhood committees or groups, I think, is putting committees together to work with the district relative to the project. I would note that we're incorporating in the design of the school a meeting space that would be segregated from the bulk of the school, that would be usable by neighborhood groups and so forth in the evening, that would have restrooms and so forth that would be able to be used in the evenings. We will be developing a playground area in that green space to the east that also would be available for neighborhood use during non-school hours. We will be incorporating update security and safety measures both in the school and on the property. The exceptions we are asking for in both the building and the parking, I think, allow for the layout of the building and the site to provide the functionality that we feel we need to to make the school operate in the best manner we can. So I would point out a couple of factors here. You asked about number of students. There are eleven preschool classrooms. That will each house about twenty-five, so that would be about three, 275 students. The middle school program is eight to ten students per classroom, and there are five classrooms. I'd have to look here. It's eight to ten students per classroom. I think there's eight, so I think that's eighty, up to eighty kids in the middle school alternative program. The middle school alternative program currently, and obviously, as Eric said, these can change, but currently runs from about nine in the morning till two in the afternoon. There are kids that arrive by bus for the middle school program, as well as kids who arrive by bus for the pre-K program, as well as parent drop-offs. We have talked to Mid-America, and we would maybe propose that we extend the bus drop on 16th Street a little further north to allow more bus queuing area there, and that's still being studied and determined whether or not we can move an electrical pole there, and I think we can. So we would try to improve the bus drop-off for more bus space, maintaining as many parking stalls as we can to alleviate the street issues. The district is asking for your favorable passage of these requests, and we'd be available to answer any questions you might have.
Brooke? On the parking, on the other parking, where's the drop-off area?
For the pre-K program, essentially, they need to park and come in. They have to sign their kids in and out, so they will park in parking stalls and come into the building to pick up their kids.
And there's one entrance into that building at that point?
We are looking at recommendation by staff that we, they asked that we not have the two because they were too close together, not the sixty-foot spacing or whatever that element was. So from our meeting with the city, we have looked at using a single approach to that parking lot.
And that whole area is the preschool?
The whole east wing is preschool.
And the other?
The north end, kind of about where you see those two niches, this portion here would be the meeting room and restrooms and storerooms, and then the pre-K classrooms basically take the balance of that space.
And then the other space is the middle school?
This is the middle school.
And administration.
And the center is all administrative office areas, mechanical rooms, nurse area, conference rooms and so.
And the middle school's all on one level also, correct?
Yes, it's all on one level, yes.
And why is that section on one level versus two?
It's easier for control of the students and the staff, and it's easier to maintain. We don't like to put an elevator in if we can help it because of the maintaining of those, as well as being able to monitor activities on a couple of different floors. So if possible and we can make it work, we prefer a functionality of a one-story school.
Thank you.
I have a question, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Just a follow-up question to the number of students. You indicated there's about 275 pre-K, so do they attend in the morning session and afternoon session separate? Because if there's that many, there's not going to be enough parking places for the moms to come in to sign them out in.
That has not been fully determined yet whether or not it will be an all-day program or a morning-afternoon or a combination thereof. I don't believe they have decided definitely which path that will take yet.
Mel?
I appreciate your kind of updated conceptual site plan, if we want to call the second one that. But I'm curious, would you still, even with some of these modifications, you'd still be seeking the general appeals and the exceptions that you requested in your original application, correct?
Yes, we'd still be looking for those, yes.
Okay, all right.
And I would say that I think we've decreased the amount of paved area. Actually, I think with this new concept for the new school, I think there's actually very comparable to or less parking spots than are currently on site at this time.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you. Is there anybody else here to speak in support? Is there anybody here to speak in opposition?
Hello, my name is Brian Clark. I live at 2001 Chautauqua Parkway, catty corner to the north and to the west of the site. I've got some graphics that I'd like to share. This is the building plan as we received from the school district about a month ago. And one of the things that hasn't been talked much about is how much the site naturally slopes. There's about a, I'd imagine, a five-to-eight-foot drop from where the administration area is going to be, the orange, to the perimeter. Knowing that we're going to have to maintain, we're going to have to detain some of that water, really interesting how they're going to do that, especially knowing that the parking is looked to be pulled out within fifteen feet of that setback. Just concerned that there's not going to be room to do that, other than underground. As an architect, I've had one client who's had enough money to do that in the past, and it's very expensive endeavor. Here, I've tried to do an overlay. Once again, the colored-in area is showing where the school goes in context with the existing site. So the existing site pulled off of the assessor's page, but really looking at how much, we already know it's going to bite into the north edge by eighteen feet. So what I was interested in was how much, how far do the existing properties along there, how close do they get to their setbacks? And I've done the calculations all around, and as you can see, to Allison on the top side of the page or the left side of the page, those houses are set back thirty-two feet. Around Chautauqua to the upper left, those are back thirty-eight and a half feet. To the south, those are about twenty-seven, twenty-six feet, and then to 16th, they're back twenty-five feet. So really curious as to why we'd allow a new building come into this area and eat that much further into the setbacks than the existing buildings are. I'm glad to see that the parking is being adjusted so that there are no longer two outlets onto Allison, but I'm really concerned that Allison is only a twenty-foot wide street as it is right now. Allison is probably the worst street surrounding the property. It gets all the stormwater runoff from the site right now, as well as the neighborhood because there are no storm intakes on Allison. That street is the most in disrepair of the area. The other concern with Allison is that it has a, I don't know if you can barely see it at the bottom left-hand corner, it's an offset intersection down there. So when you've got traffic coming from the east and from the west, looking to access 16th, there's already a slight bit of congestion there, and really concerned that when we add a hundred cars for pickup and drop-off, two hundred cars for pickup and drop-off, that we are going to push a lot of traffic into the Chautauqua Park Neighborhood Association specifically, which has been designed and was purposely designed without sidewalks, and the streets are twenty-foot wide. And my wife and I and our children and all of our neighbors use the street to walk our dogs, to take bike rides, and really concerned with the safety concerns that are going to grow out of this. Understanding that the building, as it's sited right now in that corner, will be far enough away to allow for some visibility, but it's a three-way intersection, and it's only got one stop sign on that three-way intersection. So traffic readily flows from Allison either way onto Chautauqua without ever having to stop. And then the same, I guess the same goes for 16th Street. Right now, has, Eric mentioned it, we need to look at some traffic and safety items, Eric, because 16th Street, we probably need stop signs, four-way stops at both 16th Allison and 16th Jefferson, as you can see. 16th and Jefferson is also an offset intersection. We as a neighborhood would like to see, or I as a designer would like to see, the entrance into the parking lot off of 16th, understanding that there's a bus lane, there's drop-off that needs to be handled, but I think that entrance into the parking and entrance out of the parking ought to be pushed onto 16th, which is really the only major street in that area.
Questions? Mel?
Brian, just a couple of quick follow-up questions to some of your comments. You mentioned some concerns with Allison Avenue or Street there. Is there any parking allowed on that street at this time?
There is.
There is one side, or?
Both sides are allowed right now.
So if it's twenty-foot wide and you park on both sides, that would leave a single lane to drive through, wouldn't it?
There may be no parking on the south side of that, but there are a couple rentals on the north side, and there are usually two cars parked on that north side.
Okay. Are there any sidewalks along Allison now?
There are no sidewalks.
There are no sidewalks, okay, all right. And with your comments, are you representing just yourself as a neighborhood resident, or are you representing your neighborhood association?
More or less the neighborhood association. I've been the president before, my wife's the secretary right now.
Okay, okay.
And we've been, happily lived across the street for fifteen years, and the school's always been a really good neighbor.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Brooke? You said Allison's the worst street. Is that the worst street because it's twenty feet and the others are wider?
The asphalt overlay continually deteriorates, and I think it's just the amount of water that sets on it. There are no storm intakes on Allison. The closest storm intake is right down here in this corner. So even, I live in the upper corner, all of our runoff comes down Allison as does.
And the slope of the land, you said, is about five to eight feet?
Yes, there was a picture that was shown before. Standing at this, standing from here, looking back to the building, as a six-foot-tall gentleman, you can see where the crest, I'd say there's easily six foot of fall.
Okay. And my last question was, I forgot now. I lost it, but old age, I guess. Oh, I know. Did the association have a vote on this, or did you just have the two meetings with the district?
The association found out about the project because it was, it hit the paper. It was after it hit the paper that then we tried to get as involved as we could, and Bill Good has been good enough to meet with us now twice. And they're talking about continuing to do that. I don't believe we've met with the designers yet. I believe it's been all with Bill Good. My wife's been privy to those meetings, and I've been traveling those dates.
Thank you.
Brian, on those meetings, did you express your concerns about maybe using, not using Allison, but using 16?
As I said, I was not at those meetings. I did.
So you don't know if they've even been expressed to the school board? Okay. Any other questions? Thank you. Is there anybody else here to speak in opposition?
Mr. Chairman, Board members, Mr. Kelly, my name is Mike Smith. I live at 2015 Nash Drive, Chautauqua Park. I've lived there for 23 years, and I'm not here to wave a pitchfork at the school district. I've been a past president of the neighborhood association. My wife's seated next to me there, is the current president of our neighborhood association. We've had a long association with Cassidy. We've had many of our neighborhood meetings at Cassidy, and we've been worried about this site for the last, I don't know, seven or eight years, because the school district was talking about abandoning this school, and we were very concerned about what was going to happen to this old building. At one time, Nancy Sebring talked about it could go on the auction block to the highest bidder. We had a lot of concerns about that. So when I first heard there was going to be a new school, I was delighted. And in general, I'm still delighted there's going to be a new school, but I have some problems with what's being proposed. And I speak for myself. I also speak as a member of the association. We discussed this at our last meeting. We did not, to answer one of your questions, take a vote, but a bunch of us are concerned. We're a small, struggling association. We've just talked about this informally, and we've had very little time to react to what's going on. One of the things I'm concerned about is your staff presentation talking about not wanting to stick out. That north wing, that's precisely what it's going to do. It's going to stick out to Allison. It's too close to the street. They're not asking you for a couple of feet here. They're asking to spill over fifty percent of the setback, both with the building and the parking. And what I've been looking at, as a retired attorney for the state, I was looking at your criteria, and I looked first at the code on Board of Adjustment. Code Section 414.12 Sub 3 talks about the applicant showing you there would be unnecessary hardship if you don't grant him this exception. And I'm looking at your criteria on page seven of your staff report, particularly two and three, the exception is reasonably necessary due to the practical difficulties related to land in question, and three, the key, such practical difficulties cannot be overcome by any feasible alternative means other than an exception. Here's what bothers me. From the time we've seen this, we've seen eleven preschool classrooms times 25 capacity, and we've seen eight Mac classrooms times eight or 10. Somebody in the school district decided, okay, here's what we need right now. And so Bill Good and I suppose the architectural consultant was given the job of putting this into a building that would work and putting a footprint on this property. I think the problem is they got too much building and too much parking on not enough property. got too much building and too much parking on not enough property. And I sympathize with the school district, because when they try to get rid of multi-story buildings and go to single-story buildings, they got problems. On some of these sites, they don't have as much space as they'd like. But it seems to me, they ought to be showing you that they really need this particular size, this many classrooms, this capacity, and that if they didn't do this, the student wouldn't work. I haven't heard that from them. I haven't heard them make that kind of a showing, and maybe the rebuttal will make that showing. But I'm not convinced they need to have what they're proposing here. I don't know why they can't do it a little smaller and then make it fit, and then not be asking you to create, they're going to create congestion problems. There's going to be definitely street congestion problems, parking problems, and we're going to have a building sticking too close to Allison. Thank you.
Mr. Smith?
Yeah. One question.
Yeah, yeah.
Think you want to field a few, don't you?
You can't talk and run, Mike. Just a quick question for you. Now, I'm not sure I've got the ability to determine what the school's needs are to serve their district.
I understand that.
I kind of understand your point, but let's say they do need all that room. They had specifically said they're trying to stay away from a certain area of the site to preserve some of the trees and some of the open space.
I appreciate that.
Okay. But what if they said, well, to go to your point, Mike, yeah, we don't want to encroach, take 50% there on the north side, but gee, we're going to have to move further to the east then and take out a few of those trees?
That would worry me a lot. Those oak trees have been there a long time. They've been there before the neighborhood was, and they're going to be there when I'm dead, and so I'd like them to stay there.
So, if you'd have to choose between a couple to still, you know, if that's their need, that they need that much room for classrooms?
If I were convinced they had to have this particular size, I don't think I'd be here. I'm just not, they just haven't shown that, and I think they have a duty to show that to you, that they really have, that they'd have a hardship if they had to do a different footprint here.
Gotcha. Okay.
Thank you.
That helps me. Thanks.
Can I just make a quick comment? I'm going to take off my hat and be a teacher for a minute. I'm a retired school teacher, and when you look at the requests for space that they're asking for, it's probably really not unrealistic, because they are servicing some special needs students. It's an alternative school, so that would be one consideration. And we would hope that that area of town would continue to grow. It's a sustainable neighborhood, great diversity there, so I would also hope that we would maintain that capacity for further growth.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else here to speak in opposition? How many more people are going to speak in opposition? Raise your hand. Guys want to just line up over here, so?
How much time do they get?
I'm going to be quick. I'm Susan Sights, and I'm president of Chautauqua Park Neighborhood Association. We did not take a vote, but we were all in agreement with what everyone has said so far, with what, especially what Brian has said. So, that is pretty much a consensus of the people who were at our meeting.
Great. Thank you.
Jim Johnson, 1918 Avalon Road, Chautauqua Park. I'm really glad to see the school board, the school system, working to do something with this piece of land besides what happened with the rice field debacle. I think it needs a little minor tweaking. There was a map here somewhere. I live right about there. I ride my bicycle through here all the time to get south. I would really like to have access in behind the building. I'm assuming that they will have a sidewalk of some sort. But my primary concern is the setback on Allison. We have a whole lot of schoolkids, elderly, whatever, who have to walk to catch the bus down here at, okay, 16th, Allison, right there. So, there's kid traffic, elderly traffic, and it could maybe someday, all making this trek down here to catch the bus at 16th and Allison. I want a sidewalk on Allison, and as part of the sidewalk, I don't know why we can't really have 30-foot, 35-foot setback as it is right now, in part to accommodate the sidewalk, to take people off of Allison, which is, others have said, is a 20-foot-wide street with parking on one side. It gets pretty confining, and then you get snow and ice and rain and water runoff, and additional traffic into this site. It's hazardous. I want a sidewalk. I want a setback. And I also want a setback for the kids in the building. Kids need to be setting, kids need to be able to see greenway, greenway, trees, grass, whatever. They also need a certain amount of setback from the street. As a lot of you probably know, sound, how can I say this, sound diminishes by a what, a cube root. Sound at the source diminishes very fast as you get further from the source. The source of the noise is the traffic in the middle of the street. The further you move back, the quieter it is, much quieter. I'm wanting quiet for those kids. I'm also wanting some nature outside their windows, something besides the street. But my primary concern is the sidewalk in Allison, and I hope that you'll vote to reject the setback variance. Thank you.
Thank you.
Don Vines, 1531 16th, resident of the Mon Daimen, and I'm speaking for myself. And as attending some of the two neighborhood meetings that were held, we did not feel the consensus, at least at the meeting, was that the, we first found out about this whole project with the public news release, and at that time, the architect had already been hired, the plans had basically been drawn up, and we were presented with this, and no knowledge at all that it was even taking place, apparently. And after the meetings that were held with Mr. Aheart and Mr. Good, the words that were heard most often were demeaning and insulting about the way it was done. And I think we still feel that way, just might take from what I was hearing at the time. And we wish we would have had input into it sooner, and we agree with Chautauqua's recommendations on it, but I just want to give that statement. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Bob Tonelli. I live at 1413 Burlington Terrace, which is on the corner of Burlington and Chautauqua Parkway, and I want to talk about human nature. What I want to talk about is their proposal, if I'm correct, all the traffic to come in and drop off these kids are going to come off 16th and into Allison. Human nature being what it is, that's going to be a cluster. What's the average person going to do? They're going to come down Hickman, come up Chautauqua, over Burlington, come down, and come in from the other side, because they don't want to have to wait on 16th. We will see a significant increase in traffic in the Chautauqua Park. Now, there's two things you can do. One, we've been asking for years, where it makes that curve, that three-way intersection, to have stop signs there. If we get a stop sign there, that will slow it down, maybe discourage some of them. The other thing is, you must have stop signs on 16th at the offset with Jackson, Jefferson, excuse me, let me get it right, Allison and Allison. You've got to break it up so they just don't go careening by there, and then they're fighting to get in that one driveway. And that's all I wanted to say. But human nature being human nature, people are going to do it. That's what I would do, and that's probably what you would do. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else here to speak in opposition? Mr. Odi, you've got about three minutes to give your closer.
Just maybe a couple of items in response to questions. The concept at this point in time is that we would have underground retention in those parking lot areas. We've done that at Edmunds, we've done that at Jackson and other locations as well. So, we recognize the fact, obviously, that we know there's a drop across that site, and we have to do something to take care of storm, and at this point in time, we are looking at underground retention area. Staff has recommended, and we certainly would look at putting a walk along Allison. The staff, the traffic department asked for a sidewalk there, and we would certainly look at doing that. Obviously, work with staff, traffic, and see about stop signs and so forth, what their recommendations would be there. Well, the number of classrooms, that has been studied by the city. One of the objectives here is to move the pre-K classrooms out of adjoining elementary schools in this neighborhood that have taken space out of those schools, so we can, again, reestablish those as normal 1 through 5 educational classrooms. So, we're consolidating classrooms out of elementary schools, and they have studied the number of pre-Ks that they think there is needed. That's a continuing growing program with the state funding, so that continues to grow. And the five, the classrooms for the middle school alternative program are set based upon their current requirements, which is about 80 kids and a limited number of kids per classroom. So, the footprint, it has been studied, and because of the need of meeting of activity spaces for both those programs and getting those incorporated, we have studied all of that, so.
Okay.
I just have a quick question. Do you have a timeline identified or established yet, or is that?
The timeline that we're looking at is to demolish, to abate the building immediately when school is out this summer, demolish the building and start construction of the building this fall.
To open a year from now?
Open in August, a year from now, yeah.
So, in 2014?
Right.
Brooke, can you address the question about the entrance to the parking on 16th versus Allison?
I think we could certainly look at that. The grade issue would be a question there is what kind of grade we can get there and have a access drive that would not be too steep, so it would be slippery and all those types of things. So, we would certainly take a look at that, but I'm not sure that by grade it would work in that area or not.
Jake?
Sir, I assume you have a double-loaded corridor, classrooms on both sides?
Yes.
In the north portion?
In both portions, yes.
And understand that you've studied the number of classrooms, so obviously I don't have any idea of what that accuracy is, but it would seem as though you can enlarge the footprint east and west, have the same number of classrooms along that double-loaded corridor, pull the building back out of the setback, at least to some degree from what you're proposing?
There is. We have studied that already. You know, optimally, we get long, narrow classrooms. They don't function as well as we have classrooms that are, tend to be more square or close to being square. It gets a little bit more difficult to function in those classrooms, so it's not our choice is to lengthen out classrooms. So, we prefer not to do that, and the size of those classrooms is really set by state requirements as far as preschool activity areas concerned, so.
Okay.
It is possible we can lengthen, but I don't think we'd lengthen enough to.
And I'm not suggesting to come clear out of some sort of exception requirement, but you obviously could have some impact.
Long, narrow classrooms just don't function very well for classes. Thank you.
Oh, I just got one. My concern is, you know, you've got quite a few neighbors here that seem to be hit from left field on your request. These aren't people that just lived there the last five or 10 years. We've got some 20, 30-year people living in that area, and it doesn't appear to be that there's a great deal of communication going on between the two. I mean, I just, I guess, you know, it's aside from the vote, but I hope you'd open the doors up to these people, listen to their concerns, because I can tell you in my neighborhood, if somebody came in and wanted to put a school in, I could tell you what kind of traffic patterns are going to be there. And, you know, that kind of input is pretty valuable, and these people have a lot of good intuition of what can happen, and it doesn't appear that you guys are taking advantage of any of that right now, so.
The, we tested the site very early, even before, we moved fairly quickly on the next coming bond issue for the school district here, and we had to test that site to make sure it would work for what the district was looking at doing. So, we were out in front even of some things and getting the concept together on this. So, as soon as the board had passed the conceptual bond issue, then we did go to the neighborhood committees, and like I said, there've been a couple of meetings, and Bill Good maintains that dialogue, so we will continue that, so.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Just one more comment. Yeah, you know, I really think that you've got access here to some neighborhood associations that probably have some expertise. Brian, I was really impressed with your analysis. You know, and I think that it's important that we really work closely with neighborhood associations. When I hear people come up and say, gee, we, you know, we learned about it late, and I think the city's doing a much better job of getting the word out there, but obviously, you know, when this all started, it was a problem too. So, you know, I would really like to see you guys partner with the neighborhood associations and take care of some of the expertise out there.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any last questions for staff?
I do.
Brooke?
I have a question, too.
The one gentleman brought up the hardship. Can you address that?
Yes. He's correct, and when he read the state code, that's the, those are the criteria that are required for variances. The, what you're looking at is called an exception, and under the state code, that's within the category of special exceptions, and the city and their zoning ordinance is allowed to set separate criteria for anything that is considered as a special exception. Basically, they said anything that was half the requirement. There's another, a number of other things, as you know, on the board, perhaps not Cherie being new, but that also fall under that, things such as conditional uses, special permits, and then there's other criteria for different types of exceptions of things like minimum family, single-family design guidelines, flag lots, and some other things that have an entirely separate set of criteria. So, if this was looking at a variance, yes, they would have had to demonstrate unnecessary hardship. In this case, it's practical difficulty due to the limitations of the current property as it sits. They do have to maintain the essential character, and then they also have to look at whether there's, by other feasible alternatives. So, that, as he indicated, that is something that the board must make a determination that this is, after looking at all feasible alternatives, I guess I would point out on that, that this is an asset already in the school's hands, whereas many of the alternatives would probably either affect the essential character in another fashion, or would probably have a higher price tag to them, so, in terms of having to acquire other land or something of that nature.
I believe that some of the neighbors had some concerns that I believe were addressed by the school, the gentleman from the school, in terms of the groundwater and all of that sort of thing. But what would it take from the city of Des Moines to get some stop signs placed in that area? It just seems like it's very negligent, and it would really help for a school situation to force people to actually stop and look and start before they go through.
When they build this, we have an administrative review that will look at the stormwater. It'll look at traffic, and we've asked preliminarily, even before they submit their final site plan, to provide trip distribution analysis, so we can determine, are the facilities surrounding the site adequate? You know, is, if they're allowing parking on Allison, is the number of trips going to be, is this facility going to be able to handle the number of expected trips as they're proposed to be distributed throughout the time of the day? So, they would look at whether other traffic controls are warranted at other intersections. We've had comments from DART, because there is also a stop here for the transit as well that the gentleman mentioned. That has to be rethought, where the placement of that is going to be placed. So, in the site plan review that we normally do administratively, those things are taken under consideration, giving policies that have been visited over time on these types of site developments. So, if this wasn't coming in front of the board for some relief, it would have probably had no notification to the neighborhood, other than what the district is doing to communicate directly with them.
And Eric, I'm sorry to interrupt, but on that same thought, there would still be a site plan review, and traffic engineering issues would still be reviewed.
They still have to fulfill. There's ordinances adopted by the city council that are, you know, based on EPA requirements, that they have to hold so much stormwater. They have to provide water quality for what they release into the system, so they will have to design to that, and that's, does, as Brian Clark mentioned, there's a lot of expense to that.
Okay. Thanks.
Any other questions? Thanks, Eric. We'll close the public portion and go to board decision. We've been on this an hour. You guys are awful quiet.
Well, I would like to see a way to try to, find a way to redevelop this property for use of the school. I know over on East Washington, East 12th Street, old school sat there, falling apart, windows broken out. I think that's the last thing we'd want to see. Not necessarily that's what the school district would do, but they want to try to reuse this. I think that our purview here is to look at those setbacks and how significant those would impact the neighborhood. The issues with the traffic and the drop-off lanes, I think we're all concerned, but as Eric said, that isn't necessarily what we're here to do. Will our exceptions themselves cause the extra traffic? I don't think that they would. I think on the south edge there, that would be very minimal. That north end, it's going to stick out a little further, but it sounds like the concern is, let's preserve our trees as much as, let's preserve our setback. So, I think as much as they're trying to ask for some exceptions, they're also trying to work as much as they can to make this footprint work. So, and this isn't a developer trying to slide in and put in a liquor store. Oh, sorry to say the L-word. sorry to say the L-word. Um, I, I, I think the school district's trying to work in the best interest of the neighborhood. I, I think they need to continue to work with the neighborhood, so I'd, I'd support the except, exceptions requested here.
Okay, so you're going against, uh, staff recommendation then? Yeah? Item four on staff recommendation.
Let's see, let me look at that a little-
Isn't that right, Eric?
Yeah, and as I mentioned, if you feel they've demonstrated that-
Mm-huh.
Yeah, go, explain it one more time, 'cause I, yeah.
This was rather within the last couple days since the staff report was developed.
Yeah.
And we still had, I hadn't even seen how they might-
Right.
-come up with an alternative.
I'm okay with the newer conceptual plan, and, and even with what they've got on, on number four, we've still got an alley between the parking lot and that house. It doesn't look like it's that close. I'm, I'm not as concerned about item four, so.
The traffic safety requirements of the separation of drives and things is gonna, and from the planning perspective, is gonna trump the, the four feet we're gonna gain by shifting it back and having the driveway in another location. So the big thing was to try to do something to move the parking further away from the house than if they can't pull it back, uh, to be even with the house. Um, so I guess, I think that's a reasonable trade-off to get the safety feature, component of the drives being separated adequately, um, and segregated, because they don't wanna have public traffic passing through their, um, parking lot there if they can help it, so.
Okay.
Staff would yield to that, the board's, um, determination on number four.
Okay. So you're saying give them the 15?
Let's talk to Earl Martin.
Okay.
See where we go.
I think it's a, I think the, um, half of that exception, I think it could be mitigated. I understand the, the rationale be- behind a, a square classroom as opposed to a rectangular one. However, in that dimension, it seems like it's only two or three feet per classroom, if you've got six on each side of the corridor. I guess I'm curious to know if that is-
Enough.
-enough of an issue within the layout of a classroom. To me, it seems like there's some middle ground between sticking that far out. I think they've done a great job in terms of not encroaching into green space, and I think if, if we do what I'm saying, it's going to cost some trees, so it needs to be decided which is more important. But they've done a great job of maximizing green space and fitting their school on there. It really comes down to take out more green space and have the school squattier or longer as it's presented.
Brooke, uh, I'm not gonna support this. Uh, I think that there should've been more communication with the neighborhoods. Uh, I also think the school district has an added responsibility to, to listen even closer than maybe private industry. Um, the architect was here, and they never asked him to come up and speak on the design. Uh, it, there's a lot of, we can look into that, which leads me to believe that probably ain't gonna happen. I don't understand how you can look at a street that has 20 feet and parking on one side where the other streets have 25 feet and not realize that that may be a better option. Uh, I think they've taken it for granted, and I can't support it.
Cindy?
To, to piggyback off Brooke, would it be possible to delay this for another month, to give the school time to go visit with the neighbors, to try to get some consensus, some better consensus built, and also to work with city staff together on this?
I don't know if that's gonna-
I agree, I don't believe that there's been enough input. I don't think the neighborhood association groups or the individual neighbors had enough time to really react to this, and essentially, that's all they had to, had was reaction, which isn't always a good, healthy way of looking at something.
I agree. I, you know, you already, I already expressed my frustration, but the thing that's in front of us is just the setbacks. If there was something else that I could lean on, I'd sure like to, but right now, there, it's just the setback issue that, that they're here before us right now. But I'm with you, Brooke. I, I, you know, yeah, look at all the people that came here. It, it, it's their neighborhood that's being encroached upon, and, uh, I don't think that the communications with the Des Moines Public Schools and the neighborhood, multiple neighborhood groups, has taken place at all, but I, we can't control that. We can ask them to have, you know, put a little bit more emphasis into it, but, you know, we're just, uh, we're just communicating to them now at that point. Setback issues are about, the only thing we can, we can vote on here, so. I don't, what, an answer to you, Cindy, I think, no sense, you know, going, 'cause I, it, there's nothing that we can do to force these guys to talk. We can tell them, yeah, so.
Sure.
Again, frustration, yeah, we can't get any further than that.
I just have one quick comment. Um, I'm, you know, I realize that the setbacks, you know, are probably been drawn and, and planned, and, and the vision is, is accurate. I don't have a problem with that either. Mainly because it sounds like just two or three feet difference in a classroom going from, you know, from, to a rectangular space isn't significant, but it is. As a teacher, it is, so, um, I have a lot of empathy with, uh, neighborhood folks out there, you know, I wish that we're, that there was more that we could do, and, and hopefully you can work with the, um, the school staff once they, I, I know that, you know, when I've been in buildings, we've switched around traffic, and we've been out there with our signs, and, you know, sometimes the staff can actually control traffic patterns, but as far as, you know, what we're presented with, um, I'm okay with the setbacks.
Okay. Well, I'll entertain a motion. Now, you started out. Jake?
Well, I don't like to introduce a dog that might not hunt, so, um, what if I went with an amended approval of an exception of 12 feet less than the minimum required 35-foot setback? They have to squeeze it by another five feet on that north end. Because again, you know, looking at a square classroom, if you've got how many on the side? Six on the side? I don't know if you're gonna notice a less than one foot difference then, in a classroom. Jake, any thoughts?
Can't imagine you would.
Isn't it possible that, that the neighborhood groups and the school could sit down and work out something, though I kind of like Cindy's idea, to say, let's go back to the drawing board and let's talk about this? Because even if we change classroom sizes or don't, it looks to me like we're, I mean, we're in a very tight neighborhood where parking is already an issue. Can't we sit down and look at what some options could be for getting traffic in and out? I, I think 16th Street is so narrow, that concerns me. You know, I don't wanna stop anything. I mean, I'm, I, I don't want to see what, I don't wanna see what happened to us at Wallace School happen here, because-
Mm-huh.
-the school district absolutely abandoned buildings, and so I don't want that to happen.
Right, that, that's Wallace, right? That I was talking about, yeah.
Right, right. They're gonna, I mean, we have to work out something, but is it possible to think that we could, that we could, that the school district could ask for a, a delay for one month to sit down with the neighbors and work something out? I mean, does anybody feel that that would work?
Are you specifically talking about the setbacks? Because I'm hearing-
Well, that's a good point.
-traffic issues and not, I don't think it's valid for the board to hold off a decision for the traffic concerns, which can be worked out still before they do a site plan, but-
But if they move some things around, wouldn't, couldn't maybe that adjust the setback?
Well, let's say you don't grant the relief.
Okay.
Then that means less parking, more cars on the street. I can tell you that right away.
Okay.
Immediately, just without any, you know, that's a very simple analysis.
Okay.
The reason they have more spaces is to sort of help this. Um, there's a good chance if there's, if there's traffic distribution to warrant, that there might be some controls put into place through the normal administrative-
Okay.
-process, but what I wanna know is what, what does the board wanna gain if they continue it, uh, between now and then, because that's what we will be tasked with doing then.
Right.
And I wanna make sure I have a good direction if that's what you're gonna do.
Okay.
And, and that way, we can set to work and get it done, because a month is actually a short time to settle some of those issues.
Well, I don't think, it's so much on, on your part, Eric. I think it's, it's between the neighborhood groups and, uh, public school.
Right, but I could, they could just continue and not use the relief-
I understand.
-if their schedule warrants that, and, and then, and then my concern is, is that we'll actually have worse problems, because they'll just, because it'll be, you know, they'll have to continue based on the bond and the, and they have to meet a schedule, and my concern is gonna be they'll just drop the extra meeting room and meet the setback and, um, you know, some things that they were gonna do for the neighborhood, actually.
But invariably, traffic and engineering would still review the site plan.
That's right. We're gonna review it.
Solid.
Um, and, and we've heard these concerns. Don't think that things that are said today are not gonna get-
Right.
-presented to the, the staff individuals that are affected. Um, I'm just saying, if the board's gonna do that, please be very specific as to what we need to accomplish in that month timeframe, so that we don't have, you know, kind of re- reiterate what we have today.
I don't think we want to. I don't, I don't think, then, I don't think we wanna delay it.
Okay. It sells that. So, back to where we were. Need a motion out on the table here.
How about if I try again?
All right.
I'd like to propose an amended appeal to grant, well, I guess I'm not proposing the appeal. I'd like to propose an exception of 12 feet less than the minimum required 35-foot setback from any property line for the school, but also grant the exception of 15 feet less than the minimum required 30-foot front yard setback for the parking lots, as requested.
Okay.
I wanna make sure, is that on both sides? Both?
Of, of the school, yeah, it's gotta come back.
So the south, the, along the south as well? Okay.
Mm-huh. All the way around.
So it's really, you're reducing it by, uh, five feet on either side?
Right.
Right.
Yep, yep.
Okay. Go here a second.
Okay. Send in that dog back.
I'll second.
Okay.
Oh, I'm out.
All right. I'll give Cindy the second, so. They moved and seconded. Uh, any further discussion? The only thing I say, I'm, I'm still disappointed, but I think, Mr. Ode, you've heard, uh, from the neighbors, and I think opening your door to a lot of their comments will go a long way to making it a, a very cohesive neighborhood, so I hope that, uh, I don't know where this vote's gonna go, but I hope that, uh, you listen to what these people have to say, okay? They moved and seconded, is there any further discussion? And again, it's, uh, to grant 12 feet less than the minimum 35-foot setback from any property line for a school building, and 15 feet for the, uh, of the 30-foot setback for a parking lot. All's in favor, raise your hand, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries six to one. You know, folks, for a consent agenda, Ida, we just probably set a new record.
Well, it's an important one for everyone, though, so.
There we go. That's right. Well, thank you all for taking the time to come on out here. Uh, Bert, do we have item seven?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll put this here.
All right. Item seven's an exception at 826 East Dunham.
Item number seven is a little simpler than the last one, thankfully. Uh, the applicant wants to divide an existing lot into two properties, or into two parcels, so they can construct two new, um, single-family houses. Subject property's on the north side of East Dunham Avenue. It's currently 120 feet wide by 119 and a half feet deep. Uh, so in R160, properties are required to have at least 60 feet of lot width and at least 7,500 square feet of lot area. These two properties would meet the minimum required 60-foot lot width, but they would be, uh, deficient by 330 square feet apiece on the lot area, so. Here's the, uh, pre-proposed plat of survey. Again, it's 120-foot wide lot now would be divided into two 60-foot wide lots, but at the lot area would only be 7,175 square feet and then 7,172 square feet. So they're short roughly 320, 330 square feet of lot area. Here's a picture of one of the homes that they would construct, and then here is the other one. Site photo. You see right now, it's just a undeveloped, open space. Uh, it was originally platted as three 40-foot wide lots, uh, so that had been combined at some point in time. And we did get two comment cards in opposition for the properties to the east and the northeast. Steph feels that there is a practical difficulty, uh, being demonstrated here, uh, since they have the lot width necessary for two lots, but they don't have the lot area. Um, we feel it's, uh, would be a minimal burden on the surrounding neighborhood, so we've recommended approval, subject to, uh, just these four conditions. One, that they, uh, that the dwellings are constructed in compliance with the submitted elevations and with materials that are compatible with the surrounding neighborhood; two, that they have the paved off-stream parking space on each lot that is outside of the minimum required front yard setback and access by paved dry wood; three, they comply with the building code and obtain all necessary permits; and four, that the lot reconfiguration is in accordance with a plat of survey approved by the permit development center. Any questions?
Questions for staff? Thanks, Bert. Applicant, represented the applicant?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the board. I'm Rick Madden, 5909 Grand Avenue, Des Moines. Um, you know, originally, this is, as Bert said, it was planted as three lots. Not sure where the house was that was there, or why they combined, uh, combined all three. Sometimes it seems like people do that, not knowing the repercussions they're gonna face later, but either way, I think the two homes, uh, rather than three, makes for a much better layout and use of the land. Um, there are 40-foot lots with houses on them, just down the street, four or five houses. Um, the, the previous house was demoed in 2002, and, you know, I know everybody loves to have open space next to their house, um, but I don't think, you know, I think two lots at 60 feet, uh, would fit very nicely into the flow of the neighborhood. We're asking for less than 5% of an exception. Um, you know, we've been around a long time, we'll build a couple nice, quality homes there that fit into the neighborhood, and be an asset to both the neighborhood and the city, so.
I have a question.
Cindy?
Are these gonna be rental properties or owner-occupied, or what, what are your plans?
We'll sell those owner-occupied. Yep.
Do you have an elevation that shows the profile of, of what they'll look like?
Uh-
Yeah, I just had to step out there. Can I see that again, quick?
Sure.
Okay.
See that?
Okay, yeah. One and then the other. Okay.
A ranch and a split wire.
Okay.
Any other questions for the applicant?
Well, either of them have garages, am I just not seeing it?
Uh, nope. They'll be, um, the driveways will run beside the house, um, and then there'll be plenty of room in the back for garages.
Okay.
Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else here to speak in support? Anybody here to speak in opposition?
Yeah, my name's Wayne Ware, and I live at 832 East Dunham. Uh, I lived down there for 22 years, and I think by putting two houses in those lots, you'll be cramming them in there, and a concern of mine is, I got wa- I get bad water in my basement. I'm afraid of the runoff from the houses. My yard is actually graded down to the first 40-foot lot, and then it goes back up to the other two 40-foot, and I'm afraid you'll have to build that up enough that I'll have more water coming in that northwest corner of my basement. That's why I got some-
Okay. Questions? Thank you. Anybody else here to speak in opposition? Mr. Madden, you got three minutes, you close up?
I was just gonna say that I'm not sure how high in the area his house sits, but I'm gonna have plenty of dirt, and I'd be more than happy to work with him to, uh, you know, build up alongside his house, as long as it isn't too low into the ground. If it is, you know, that's hard to prevent, but-
Good to see cooperation here.
And were, were you proposing basements for these?
Uh, well, the split will have, uh-
Okay.
-you know, three feet in the ground, and the ranch will have a full basement, yeah.
Okay, because I think staff mentioned that, uh, there may need to be a minor plat And were, were you proposing basements for these?
Uh, well, the split will have, uh,
Okay.
three feet in the ground, and the ranch will have a full basement, yeah.
Okay, because I think staff mentioned that, uh, there may need to be a minor plat to handle footing drain discharges and related stormwater and
Yep.
water flow issues.
Yep.
One question.
Brooks?
Is there a, I think I know the answer, but did you look in the building, just one, like, two plaques on this property versus, uh,
Um,
single-family houses?
It's zoned R160, so.
Right.
Got it.
Thank you. Any last questions for staff? Hearing none, we'll close the public portion and go to court decision.
Second?
Moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? All's in favor, raise your hand, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries seven to nothing. And I sure hope you're going to take advantage of that and get some conversation going. Thank you. Uh, item eight is a variance at 1437 Maury, and we have a revised staff recommendation. I hope everybody's got that.
I'll start by summarizing. Um, the main difference is, after a discussion with the, the appellant, uh, it became clear, one of the things that had been put in the staff recommendation and report were, was that it had been out of continuous use, and that isn't, that isn't the case. So, we wanted to correct the record on that. And in terms of the requirement for site plan, we wanted to clarify, if he's not extending the display from what it is now, there's, that does not trigger a requirement for the site plan to go to Plan and Zoning Commission, um, uh, only if he was going to increase the area that he's displaying vehicles, which he's buying the 15 feet, he's in the process of buying 15 feet from East 15th Street, so there's a potential for that to occur. But, uh, if he leaves everything as it is and takes the relief as requested, um, that wouldn't necessarily drive a vehicle display lot site plan, um, unless he extends it. So, basic, the staff report was amended to change the, the way it read with regard to the site plan requirement and then the continuous use. The, the reason it's coming in front of you is because of our, our comprehensive, um, review of that entire area under the direction of the city council to ensure compliance with setbacks. So, our enforcement staff looked at, uh, um, all the vehicle display lots and commercial, um, sites along East 14th, Army Post, um, that area to determine, was there encroachments that were occurring that, that weren't, uh, approved under the requirements that were at the time. Um, it was, it took a lot of research. So, this, the violation on this property came about at that, based on that review. And then, uh, at that time, the property was under the ownership of the appellant's father. So, um, he'll probably speak to that a little bit, uh, what, what's transpired there. So, this has a little bit of a lengthy enforcement history on it, based on a couple of ownerships. Um, my understanding is this owner's trying to correct that, so this is why it's in front of you. Uh, just to sort of quickly summarize being proposed, we're talking about the site that's in the hatched area. Just, this is East 14th Street, this is Maury. Uh, so, we're talking about the southwest corner of East 15th and Southeast 15th and Maury. Um, this is the existing building that's got repair. Uh, it's used for storage of vehicles that are for sale, and my understanding is it also houses construction contractors' businesses. It's zoned M1, so it can be used for that purpose. Um, this is the view looking down southeast 15th. You can see that some barriers have been placed temporarily to avoid use of this area while it's being, uh, went for vacation and now is in the process of being transferred to the appellant. Uh, in the meantime, enforcement is requiring that vehicles not be displayed in that area. This is, uh, looking at it straight south, and you can sort of see where the edge comes up to Ma, this is the curb from Maury. This is the edge of the paving. It's a wider right away along there. Um, however, the city was not willing to vacate it. There's a number of utilities, sewers, aerial and buried, um, gas and, uh, aerial electric in that. So, the complexity of things that are in there, the city did not want to vacate that for any private use, even though there's really not a proposal to widen Maury into this area.
What area are you talking about?
Do you see this green area? The property line's really right there, Brooke. So, normally, what we expect is there'd be a five-foot setback from the property line, and then the rest of it, the curb, is public right of way. But, and you see that that's fairly wide compared to usual? You might even assume that some of that's his, but it's not. And the city is not willing to vacate that because this is a fairly wide utility corridor for sewers and other things that have, that would require kind of complexity of easements if we vacated that. So, the preference was not to do that at this time. But they did vacate what was, um, 15 feet. So, they preserved 12 feet from the edge of the traveled street here, and then are willing to sell 15 feet of that to the appellant, and that's in the process.
Eric, back, back to what you're showing there with the BMW or whatever that car is there. The variance they're requesting is not to have to push the cars back another five feet
Right.
and remove that five feet of pavement shown.
There's some kind of broken.
Okay.
There've been some asphalt curbs placed there, so there's some curbs there, but not, we would normally require that to be.
Right. But for the part that they would be buying from the city, they would plan to be in full compliance with the setbacks and green space and everything on that.
We would expect that, yes.
Yes, okay.
Under a, under just a normal site plan
Yeah.
that wouldn't expand the area being displayed.
Okay.
So, we didn't actually change the recommendation, however. Uh, in this case, we felt there wasn't anything compelling presented that would say we needed to preserve this five feet for their use in order to remain viable or to, you know, we didn't believe that the requirement to place curbs at the edge was inexorable to keep, would keep the business from operating viably. So, um, we recommended against granting the variances at this point.
Brooke?
Excuse me. Uh, he would have to move back and create a green space five feet from that curb?
Yes, yes.
So, there'd be a green space next to a green space?
Yes.
Okay. And is there, you, you haven't shown a shot of what's behind those cars. Is there maneuvering room?
Maybe the area on my desk show that. It's, there's still area between the building. Right now, I don't even think it's wide enough to really get proper maneuvering for parking, for our parking standards. But we don't require the maneuvering for, for display. We can, you can display tandem. We basically, wherever you display, we allow you to cram as many vehicles into that area as you can possibly. And it's because the operator is the one that's determining how they're moved and maneuvered about. If that was for public parking or customer parking, we would require there'd be a 24-foot setback or maneuvering aisle behind that, plus a 17-foot stall. And I don't even think you can achieve that in what, what's there between the property line and the building. So, um, the assumption is that that's probably going to be only viable for display anyway, and taking five feet away doesn't remove enough display to make it non-viable from the staff's perspective.
One other question, and the mandate or the council wanted this, um, on southeast 14th, et cetera, this area
Mm-hmm.
on just car lots?
It was for all commercial lots. There was a focus on the vehicle display because there was, the violations tended to be from vehicle display lots in terms of what was happening is they were paved to the zero lot line and
Yeah.
the display was occurring to the lot line.
So, uh,
But it was, it included commercial parking as well.
So, are these lots that are across the street look like, a couple of them look like they're commercial. Those are not in compliance?
Some of them are, some of them are. And this one, I know is a question that's, this is the restaurant to the north, and I know that they've, we've had, it's not occupied currently, and some individuals have come in to look at reoccupying it, and we've already determined that there's, there was some paving that was extended. In fact, their paving extended into the public right of way and encroaches into the right of way. And that was after an approved site plan that met the back requirement. So, they, this one, I think I could stay, say, has done, has violated by extending their paving after a site plan was approved, so.
So, these other ones in this picture that look like come right to the lot line, et cetera, all those are?
I've seen some of these, Brooke, in front of the board in the past.
Yeah, but I mean, they're all.
There's a number of them that went zero lot line and were in violation.
And they all have to be brought into compliance.
Many of them do. It depends on when they were established, and, uh, Sue has a very long, comprehensive, uh, analysis of this, as to which ones are in what states of violation and which ones have, you know, we've, many of them have been cited, many of them have applied and come to the board for relief, and some of those actually ended up in lawsuits, too. So,
Yeah.
you might be familiar with a few of them.
And when you mentioned it, how long they've been there? So, some could be grandfathered in?
There might be some that are, that were in use, you know, even before we had zoning standards, yeah.
Okay.
All right. And, and Eric, the, on the west side of east, southeast 14th there, the one with the red roof, that's the Aztec Motors.
Yeah, that's an example of one that's come in through the current standards.
Right, with site plans.
And actually done an expansion through that.
Right. But they have trees landscaping, the setbacks, onsite stormwater retention.
That, yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
Looking a lot better.
Who was that, Rob?
The, the one with the square red roof on the west side of East 14th, that angled lot.
Parcels.
Yeah. That's where there's an old carpet sweep company, and I think the old, I don't know if it was a Derby Station, but it was that little tiny old gas station building.
Oh, yeah.
Just looked terrible. So, this is, that, that was a, quite a bit of an improvement there.
I just wanted to make sure that you understood the revised recommendation
Phenom.
because it probably makes a lot, a big difference whether somebody's gone out of use and
Sure.
whether they haven't, in terms of how you view them, so.
Okay.
Any other questions for staff?
I just have one question, and, and this may be out of your consideration, but, um, I actually drove down there this morning because it's been a long time since I've been down Murray Street. Probably, probably way back in the day when my dad used to deliver meat to our neighborhood. But, um, is there a concern there? Did you take into concern flooding or anything like that? It seemed like it lay, there, there's standing water.
Yeah, I think there's a lot of issues down there. There's, there's, that whole area has some, uh, there's probably a lack of storm sewer. It wasn't developed with storm sewer in most places.
Yeah, you're right.
So, it is a challenge when we do new sites
Yeah.
in terms of how that's going to be handled. Um, and there's a lot of grand, we didn't start requiring stormwater management until the late 70s. So, a lot of these places were built with no stormwater management. Um, it's a challenge for our engineering staff when we review stuff down here.
Isn't the city even either abandoning or taking out some of the unimproved streets there, like, I think, East Ray Road? Isn't that?
Yeah, there's, you know, the Public Works has kind of incrementally looked at all this, and in some areas, they've tried to close streets and they couldn't.
Mm-hmm.
You know, there was enough use that
Right.
they backed off on that, but other places, they barricaded and closed because there's a lot of dumping problems in some of those areas that are not heavily traffic.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Thanks, Eric. Applicant, represented the applicant?
I'm Charlie Ropero, 3606 Southwest 34th Place. Um, this is going to be a little harder for me than I anticipated it was going to be. My father passed away September 13th of 2012. My dad had been in the construction business, and, uh, due to a heart attack and a hip replacement, he couldn't do that anymore. So, he decided to open up a car lot, more or less in his retirement. Um, I certainly didn't really want him to do that, and we always joked that when he died, I was going to have a hundred-dollar sale and just get rid of all the cars. He died unexpectedly.
Take your time.
And, uh, I have to keep the car lot open to help my mother. You know, I need the income. I can't just, I can't just have my hundred-dollar sale like I'd like to. Um, you know, in, in going with, like, closing streets and stuff like this, I don't even know what you call southeast 15th. It's not an asphalt road. It's not a dirt road. Uh, you're absolutely right about driving down there and there being water standing in the deal. I, I dug a hole and took a sump pump out there to pump the water out of my approach this winter, and I have to give the city a lot of credit. I called them and I asked them, you know, what can we do? Those guys were out there. It was 20 degrees out, and they're jetting those culverts to, you know, give me some relief, and I appreciate that because I was surprised they'd do anything, really. Um, I don't want to drive on a gravel parking lot. I don't, I don't know if you can, let me show you some pictures.
Sure.
You know, my dad, my dad put those, uh, telephone poles there to keep from parking there. Basically, the 15th Street right of way is like, I don't know, it must be like a 30-foot right of way. He kind of asphalted that, like, with crushed asphalt, was parking cars there, and the city says, look, you can't do that. You don't own that. Well, you know, he's been down there for 35 years, took care of it. Apparently, he thought he did own it. Um, so, he stopped parking cars there. He got a variance to buy that land, and then it just never happened. You know, probably because he's thinking, why do I want to spend $10,000 on ground that I'm already taking care of? In order to get into compliance, I've given the city the check. The council's approved it. It's just, that happened two weeks ago, so I don't have title to that 15 feet. Here's kind of what I am proposing that I would like to do there. Um, I want to asphalt the approach, the, the three approaches in asphalt where it's like a gravel, uh, it's a gravel approach now, and these areas, like this area is all gravel now, that's that darker color. I want to pave that. Um, people kind of, semis turn around in the lot, so they drive through that ditch and smash the culvert and whatever else. I don't know how I'm going to stop that, but I kind of, in my, my mind, I thought, you know, if I plant a bunch of bushes and some trees and stuff like that, kind of line this parking lot where those telephone poles are, if I line that with bushes, plant some trees, do that at each of those approaches in clumps, I can maybe stop people from driving through there. Um, that area that my dad used the recycled asphalt, I'm going to tear that up and grass seed it and plant those bushes. I, I guess I'm doing that either way. For that reason, I really don't want to have to put a curb there. Um, we're going to display some vehicles along that 15th Street side. Um, I'm not going to spend that kind of money on bushes and grass to drive cars through there, and if I did drive a car through there, you saw that big ditch there, I'm probably not going to make it through there. Um, I'm looking for the same thing on the Murray side. I'm really not wanting to plant bushes along Murray just because if we are displaying cars, the bushes kind of takes that away. Obviously, I, if I did plant the bushes, it would be on the city property. All cutting the parking lot off is going to do is maybe like shrink my ability to, you know, I don't have a lot of room to swing in there anyway. Murray is offset funny. I don't, I don't know why. I don't know why the right of way is so wide. I, obviously, I was willing to buy as much of that as I could to get me into compliance. From the edge of my lot line to the curb, it's 33 feet, so I'm taking care of 33 feet anyway. Does it really matter if I'm taking care of 38 feet instead? I mean, I understand they want me to back my, my cars up, but does that five feet really matter? Do you want me to spend money on curbs or on bushes and planting trees? I, obviously, the curbing's expensive, you know, as well as the other things are, and the only thing I could ask for is, um, if they are requiring me to do a lot of this, I'd like a little bit more time. This was obviously something that we weren't really planning on spending.
To summarize, on the East 15th side, you're willing to, when you buy that land, you're going to bring all that lot and not park cars past those telephone poles as they are today, correct?
I'm gonna, where those telephone poles are, I'm gonna.
That's where the bushes are?
That's where the bushes are.
Okay.
Where that's kind of like crushed asphalt now, I'm gonna
Make it grass.
tear all that up and grass seed it and plant the bushes and things in there.
And then on this, on your sketch, you're also putting in, paving those And then on this, on your sketch, you're also putting in, paving those, those entrance.
Yeah, and the city, the zoning requirement is that it's supposed to be concreted and I couldn't get my head around having to put concrete up to a dirt road, you know, and they, the city has told me that they would give me a temporary permit or for an approach that, you know, I can just use asphalt rather than concrete. So I would, I'm, I'm fine using asphalt for the approaches if, you know, and the city said they would allow it.
What you'd really like also on the Murray side is the, is it an exception, Eric? I'm sorry.
No, it'd be a variance.
Those were variants.
Variants, the variants on the Murray side that you wouldn't have to go five feet back from where the cars are, is that correct?
Yeah, that I wouldn't have to, in essence, cut my parking lot off five feet and...
Okay. I just want to make sure I understood. Thank you.
And certainly, if I, the curb is kind of a big deal, I mean, once I have to put a curb in, I've got to cut the parking lot anyway.
All right, Charlie, I appreciate everything you've put out here, I like what you've drawn here in the picture. I know that area intimately, I hang out down there all the time, I run up and down East 15th all the time. I haven't had a need for a used car lately, sorry. But, but I do have a couple of things, I just want to clarify to make sure I understand what you're asking for as well as you understand what the appeal is here that, that we're talking about. As far as paving, you know, entrances and stuff like that, I kind of like what I'm hearing about that, but really, your only appeal here relates to a couple of things. And the one is, it's that five-foot setback from the property line of having green space. You can't have paving up to the front line. And, and on Maury, that's the way it is now. But with what you're buying for the right away from the city on East 15th and what you're showing here, are you basically explaining that you'd meet that five-foot setback?
East 15th really isn't of any, I couldn't go to the city council meeting and purchase that East 15th side quick enough.
Yes.
Okay, that happened two or three weeks ago when I talked to Rita Fromm. She basically said, you do own it, the title work just hasn't...
I, I, I understand that, but if you know what you'll be winding up with and where you're proposing to put your bushes and how far out you want to park, will you still have five feet between you and then what the city is left with of...
Oh, yeah, down East 15th.
That's all I'm asking.
Because basically what they've asked me is if I want to widen the lot on that side, now I have to go in front of planning and zoning for a lot extension.
All right, so, so you have no problem with maintaining your five-foot setback from their finished property line once the dust settles on your real estate deal, right?
Yo, on the East 15th, no, no problem at all down East 15th.
Okay, okay. All right, now, on the, on the north side, what you're saying is, gee, if I gotta cut that out and cut that back, I'll either lose my parking or I probably won't even be able to get cars in there. If we were inclined to say, okay, fine, you can leave it the way it is, you've discussed having to install curbing. It does say here, it does say or wheel barriers, which are just, you know, those concrete things just so your cars don't push out further into the right away.
Okay, when I asked them about that...
Yeah. What did they say?
They said that the requirement was like a gutter and a six-inch curb.
Okay, well, we, we might need staff to...
It's in the site plan, design guidelines.
Oh, design guidelines.
Which, would that apply to that north side if we want, if, if he was able to meet...
Is that under the site plan review? The way, and that would certainly come into play if he was going for vehicle display because it's very clear in the vehicle display design guidelines that those bumper stops are not even acceptable.
Right.
I think that there's the ability to waive it as an administrative type thing.
Okay, I'll make note of that later.
Is that from the site plan process or our process?
The other way I've, we've seen it done is it says or other barriers, which we've allowed the ballers with the cables or chains in there.
Sure, sure, okay.
So that's another alternative that's available.
Okay.
I mean, I would be willing to put those.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
I mean, obviously, that's not...
Because really, I'm going to be honest with you, if you want to attract business, you got to compete with a lot of other people down there who are already selling cars and are just cramming them in there. If I was going to go buy a used car for my kid, what place would, would I pull into? I want to drive into one that looks halfway decent. So, you know, there's probably some ways that, that we can all work together here and, and help you keep attracting here, so, okay.
Any other questions? Thank you. Is there anybody else here to speak in support? Is there anybody here to speak in opposition? Any last questions for staff? I just have one, Eric. A couple of years ago when we first started with this beautification, didn't we have someone down on Fluor that had the same kind of, you know, the city had the easement, like about 20-foot...
Are you talking about Ortael?
I think it was Fluor McKinley.
By Francies there, yeah.
Yeah.
I don't know, do we even want to get into that?
Well, was, was it Francies or was it the one at Fluor and McKinley?
I thought McKinley.
Yeah, because we used the McKinley green space in the right away to...
There we go.
Yeah, yeah. Because I think the, the other one was even tighter.
There was some ability, like what you're, what you're suggesting is putting some plantings in the right away with the permission of the, the arborist or the...
No.
Because, because there was one on the southeast corner of McKinley and Fluor where they were given the right to put their material, you gave, I think you gave them a zero lot line.
I think that's the one Brooke and I were thinking.
They actually were able to put some of their shrubs in the right away, they didn't want any trees there because it was close to the airport.
They, they could if they want to, but they can't use it to meet compliance.
Technically, it wouldn't fulfill their requirement under the site.
But if it, if they did it on their own accord just to look nicer, they, they always could. But they can't use it to meet compliance.
And they do have to get permission...
Right.
...to, to put plantings.
Because that's the issue we had with the Hertz parking lot there on McKinley by the airport just a month or two ago, where they can't use that big right away and plant trees on the right way to meet their screening.
Right, right.
Okay.
Do you want to add anything, Sue Ann? Okay.
I thought you were going to talk about the one that was up by QuickTrip.
No, 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 I don't want to talk about that one.
I think we're still trying to get that one.
There is no green space there if I remember.
Any other questions for staff? Okay, we'll close the public portion, go to board decision then.
I think we have an unusual situation on Maury. I mean, it's, people zoom down East 14th, but to get on Maury, there's, there's already all that green space, I can't see where it makes any sense to make him come back five more feet. You've already got that huge right of way. So, you know, I'm gonna, I want him to be able to leave that the way it is. I like, I like what he's going to do on East 15th. I agree, I don't know that curbing's are the best, but wheel bearers or something, you know, I kind of like the, the chain things and the, you know, the wire things just so people don't impede onto that. So with that, I, I would grant the variance.
There's, there's two parts of it, right?
Two parts.
Yeah.
Okay.
But you're, you're, the variance you're granting is the five-foot?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And how do we handle this first one then?
So, well, I...
I'm working under like three different papers, the...
Let's see, on, on page, well, yeah, it depends on how you want to look at it.
I'm looking at the new revised one.
Mm-hmm.
The recommendation is to change the...
The variance?
Okay, let me look at that.
The appeal of the variance is five feet less.
Yeah, so the second part of the variance, we would be granting, the first part of the variance, he'd have to provide curbing or wheel barriers, which includes these options for the chain link.
Which he said he's...
Ballers, yeah.
So...
So, so we would deny the first part of the appeal and we would grant the second part of the appeal.
You understand what we're saying here? What, what we're saying is...
We're trying to help.
What you kind of agreed to up here is kind of the way that this motion's getting put together.
Are we talking about wheel barriers like the ones we put down and you put...
Not, not necessarily.
No.
If you could sink, sink four-inch pipe every 10 or 15 feet and then string, black chain... Black chain link between it, it just gives a barrier, your car then can't stick out.
It just needs to work with Derek.
That's a, that's a lot better than having to cut the old curbing out and then come in with asphalt or poured concrete and form and pour new curbing.
And as part of the second one, at least it was, as the motion's put out, you don't have to go back another five feet.
Yeah, yeah, we're not going to make you cut out that five foot on Maury.
Right, so what we're saying, we're...
So I heard that whatever it's going to be is right at that five foot?
Right. No, what...
Right where it is now.
Yeah, right, yeah, right where your, everything is right now, you don't have to go back another five.
In fact, if your curbing was in good shape there, then you could leave it, right?
That's right.
It only has, and just, so, just so you guys understand.
Yeah.
Forget to talk, I need you up here because we, it gets recorded.
Okay, like where there's curbing...
Yeah.
That parking lot must be about 100 foot long across the front.
Mm-hmm.
Only the east 30 feet has curb.
Right.
And it's an asphalt curb.
Yeah, so it's not the best of shape?
Um, no.
Yeah, I mean, we'd, we'd leave that at your discretion.
Right.
You, you could either add to or main, or, you know, fix the curbing you've got and add more or, or you...
Could I add an asphalt curb down that whole 100 feet?
Sure, yeah.
Getting a nod by city staff, looks good.
Yeah, and then you don't have to put any stand pipes and chain.
I mean, because you understand, I mean, I can add a curb to that easier than I can cut it off and add a concrete curb.
We are all for that, yes.
And then it, staff's agreeable to that too?
Yes.
I mean, it comes down to the, it meets the terms of the ordinance, zoning ordinance. If we were taking this to the plan and zoning for an extension of the display lot, it would not, it would not fall under the design.
Right, right. But we aren't having to do that in this case, so...
Not because it's...
Yeah, this is the quid pro quo thing here is what we're trying to accomplish.
Thank you, I just want to make sure you understood where, where we're going with this. Because it's going to sound funny that we're upholding one variance and giving another's.
Right, yeah, okay.
So I think variance of the provision that requires curbing or wheel barriers to prevent encroachments, that's not needed.
Well, it's, we're gonna, we're gonna...
No, it, it is needed.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so, so you're denying the, I feel like I'm doing the Tom thing here.
No, go ahead.
So you'd, you'd be proposing to deny the variance for the provision requiring curbing or wheel barriers.
Because we have alternatives to that.
Right, but you'd be granting the variance of five feet less than the required five-foot paving setback from the front property line. And I want to clarify that, do we have two front property lines since we have 15th? 15th as well?
Yeah.
Okay, on the Maury's...
Specifically, so...
As long as you said, yeah, on Maury Street only. So he's still got to comply with it?
Yeah, he's indicated that with the, when he takes title to that piece of property, he has no intention of requiring the other variance, so you could limit it to the Maury from what he was saying, I think.
Yeah, from the, the front property line on Maury Street only. Maury, Maury.
I was going to say, us old east side boys, that was always Maury.
Yeah.
Never heard this Maury.
I've even heard it called Murray.
So on the 15th side, I don't necessarily need a curb down the 15th side where I'm handling bushes and stuff.
I don't think, the curbs you were talking about for the whole site, correct?
I was thinking about just the Maury.
He'll, he'll need to fully comply with whatever the requirements are for the East 15th side. We, we aren't granting any special provisions over there, I don't, at least in this discussion. Yeah, based on what we're saying.
Because he, he also requested the, not having the barriers on the east side, so...
Well, he's got to come up with something over there, yeah.
But what you're saying is, is you would only grant the variance of the setback on the Maury side.
Right, right. But on that east side, you could look at the chain and the pipe or something instead of doing a, now a 200...
Yeah, we want you to do something that's very economical, we don't want you...
Would you be fine if down the, basically, there's about 200 feet of curbing? Would you be fine if...
On which side?
100 feet on Murray.
Okay.
And about 100 feet on 15th. And on 15th now, there's just the parking lot, I was going to grass and bush it.
Yeah.
Are you fine down the 15th side if I use asphalt curbing there too?
Absolutely.
Yes, yes, yes.
City staff's absolutely excited about it too.
I mean, he's probably not because they want me to put...
It doesn't hold up very well for, if there's, if there's other purposes.
We, we kind of realize that too, but yeah, yeah. I mean, if you don't push in, because you're the one parking the cars there, so if you don't drive your front wheels right up to it, keep pushing on it, you know, and if we can keep the 18-wheelers out of your lot. So why are they turning around there?
That, after the bushes, the rocks are the next one.
Why are they, why, why do they turn around there? Did they miss something down at the old Monfort and then they have to go back or did they get lost?
I don't know.
Because La Pizza House doesn't have deliveries like that.
I can't answer, it happens, it happens often though.
Okay, oh, shoo them out of there, okay.
It's often.
Okay, I'm going to move this along, folks.
Okay, yeah.
Are you, do I, yep.
Okay, all right.
Are you going to second it?
I'm not trying to steal your thunder.
No, go ahead, I'll second it.
Okay, I make a motion to deny the variance of the provision requiring the curbing or wheel barriers, so he'll have to maintain those, but grant the variance of five feet less than the minimum required five-foot paving setback from, from the front property line on Maury Street.
Okay, Linda, you're seconding it?
Yes, sir.
They moved and seconded. I don't want to discuss this much more because we beat it to death, so, all those in favor, raise your hand, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries seven to nothing.
Okay, this will be good for everybody.
Good argument. Okay, item nine, we got a revised staff recommendation as well, and this is for a conditional use permit at 1,000 East Army Post Road.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, item number nine, like Bill mentioned, has a revised staff rec, and really, the only difference between this version and the previous version is that we included a few of the criteria contained in the zoning ordinance that's applicable to all conditional use permits. We just included that in the staff recommendation, so the appellant's aware that these are requirements as well, so it's more or less just further information. The subject, subject property is located on the north side of East Army Post Road, just to the north of the Hy-Vee and South Ridge Mall. The subject property is a fairly large property, it has the subject crop, or the building occupied by La Hacienda at the southwest corner, but then there's also two other strip commercial centers on the property as well. The applicant is wanting to reuse this existing building as a restaurant use during the day, but then have an event center slash reception hall operating there in the evenings and on the weekends because they would be having those receptions and alcohol would be served at, in the reception area. They're not really considered a restaurant for zoning purposes, it's more of a tavern type use since the sale of alcohol would exceed 50% of the gross sales in the building, so they do need the conditional use permit for their proposed use. You can see there's an existing patio in front of the building that would be used as well. I know in the past, this was recently used as like a Coyote Wild nightclub that did have, have some issues, so...
Which was still before La Hacienda was...
Yeah.
Was, was in there for the last three, three years or so, yeah.
So here's just some more pictures. This one here shows the apartment building up above. The La Hacienda building is right here and then the strip commercial center here, but then above there's multifamily use separated by the building, by terrain and these trees, and there's a fence up there as well. We feel that it is adequately separated from the proposed use, so. And here's the consent map, quite a few cards in opposition. There is a card from the South Park Neighborhood Association in support as well. Staff believes that this is an appropriate location for the reception hall use, we feel it's on a major commercial corridor, we feel it's sufficiently separated from the multifamily use to the north, so we feel it's, it would satisfy the requirements for granting a conditional use permit if it operates in accordance with these conditions established in the staff report. I won't read through them, save you all time, but the first one's really the big one, that the business selling wine, liquor or beer shall operate as a restaurant with an assembly with an assembly slash reception hall component operating during the evening and weekend. So, this is really to ensure that it doesn't convert to a tavern.
Right.
Use over time.
Okay.
But the rest of the conditions are just standard requirements for businesses selling alcohol, so, any questions?
Bert, when, when the notice went out, did, it just said they're gonna serve alcohol, didn't say weekends and, so.
True, yeah.
Because that appeared to be what most of the negative comments were on the cards.
What would have been on the notice would, I can show it to you. They're asking for a conditional use permit for a business selling wine, liquor, and/or beer, and then the proposal is use of the existing ninety-three-hundred-and-fifty-square-foot building as assembly slash reception hall with sales of alcohol permitted.
Well, I can see where they get.
Yeah.
That idea, okay.
Bert, I, I don't see anything in here about music on the patio, audible levels, et cetera, do you have any concerns about that?
Yeah, and, commission number four.
Four.
Said the business should comply with the noise ordinance, and then.
Uh-oh, am I on the wrong number again here?
No outside speakers.
I think that, uh, did you get the revised?
Revised recommendation, yeah.
Okay, I gotta look at that one again. All right, so, so you got it covered, my, my apologies, I'm still looking at the other one. The staples got hung up. Yeah.
Where is it about the noise?
Number, commission number four.
Four. Okay.
No, keep going. Flip the next page. There you go.
All right, thanks for, for noting all that, I appreciate that.
Thanks for thinking about the neighborhood.
Just in case, yes, well, you know, I don't live about three blocks from there, so, and I saw a lot of red comments on the cards there.
And what's the, what's the type E sound permit? My fear is, is that this will, we've already had another issue, remember with the other one on, on east fourteenth? Where the restaurant was here and the multifamily.
Was that on Southwest Ninth?
For Southwest, whatever.
Thirsty Sportsman. Thirsty Scotsman.
Sound, just right.
Scotsman.
Yeah, the type E sound permit's limited to background auditory music, so it, it can't be reallowed. And Sue can explain the decibels, but.
The other one was inside the building too, so.
Yeah.
But that, but that, that one was inside the building, but they could still hear it outside.
Right, which was even worse.
So, if they get loud in here and we still hear it outside.
Chair members on the board, Sue Ann Donovan, zoning enforcement officer, class E is a background sound only.
Okay.
Sixty-five DBA measured at the edge of the patio.
Okay, cool.
It's designed so you can sit and talk.
At the edge of the patio?
Well, yeah.
Wow.
It's pretty, it's pretty quiet.
Okay.
But what about inside, because, I mean, that one, the music was inside and it's still, it just vibrates.
That was ninety-something DBA.
That was inside of the building, they didn't have a sound permit. We don't issue sound permits for sound inside of the building, so when that became an issue, it was a nuisance issue under the conditional use permit, and so we brought it back to rescind the conditional use permit and then reached the compromise on the DBA measured within the building, so that it didn't escape outside of the building. So, it was a little more complicated because it really wasn't a sound permit issue.
So, can we put limits on the music inside here since we have multifamily so close?
You could, and you could also ask the applicant what their intentions are for speakers within the reception hall.
More kind of, put them on notice that if there's a problem, you'll get hauled back in here and then you could lose everything.
Yeah, that would be rescission of the conditional use permit again, and.
Right.
What we did on the, the one you're talking about on Southwest Ninth, Thirsty Scotsman.
Yep.
Was hit a DBA measured roughly, well, it was across the room at the bar and measured at eighty-five DBA within the building, that way it wasn't escaping through, because that building isn't designed to hold the sound, which this one probably isn't either, so you might want to say eighty-five DBA measured fifty feet from the sound equipment or at the, you know, within the walls, I mean, you could, you could come up with some sort of.
Yeah, because it was built as a restaurant, it wasn't built as a nightclub, and we do have multifamily really close, and I know on Southwest Ninth, it took, you know, it took those neighbors, what, two years to get it finally resolved?
Right, that was.
We think it is, yeah.
It's just too long.
You could say eighty-five DBA measured within the walls of the building or something like that, then if we get a complaint, then they would have to provide us with some sort of information from a sound metering system that would show us what the, what the levels were. I think the Thirsty Scotsman actually came up with getting a sound meter reader on an iPad as an app.
Right.
So, they could run it, and then they downloaded and gave us the paperwork on what the DBA is. That would set it up ahead of time if you want to do that, if the board would, would wish to do that, then if we got a complaint, we could say, okay, now we need to monitor.
Okay.
And we want a request for your information at the eighty-five DBA measured within, within the building.
I think we can ask the applicant, get, get some more direction out of that. Okay, thanks, Sue Ann, anything else for staff? Thanks, Bert, applicant or representative of the applicant? I say somebody might be pretty confident here.
First, please.
How you doing, my name is Gustavo Perez, and I'm the owner at the.
And I need your address too.
Nine hundred East Army Post Road. And I'm the owner of the place, I still have five years' lease. What I want to do with this place is do as a family place for banquets, so people can rent it for weddings, graduations, baptisms, et cetera. And also, we want to do a restaurant, so we don't have to have problems because I don't want to deal with bar. So, I just wanted like a nice place on South Side for this, sorry, I get nervous.
It's why I take your time.
What I, what we want is, 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 you know, a nice place for South Side, people can, like, rent it and, and do these family things.
You, did you have anything going on during the week, or?
Right now, we have a few contracts that are coming, actually, May fourth, we have a wedding reception. And we've been doing, like I say, family things, I can show you contracts that I have here already. Also, this is one of the menus, a friend of mine passed to me, and I'm working on it. It's gonna be kind of like, you know, pizza plate, sandwiches, seafood, still gonna be, you know, a, a lot of food. Sorry, I get nervous doing this, I never will, but that's all we want to do, is, is, is focus and, and family thing.
Okay, Lindal, I want to ask some questions, and Mel, you wanna?
Sure, I'll start off, Gus, I live three blocks from the place. And I know Cyrus Ruston to a certain degree as well, just a couple of quick questions for you. You know, if you have people come in, let, let's say you have a wedding reception there, maybe? If you have people come there, you have a lot of cars that show up, I know there's parking right by the building, but will you be able to use the bigger part of the parking lot there that would normally be used for harbor freight and the other people?
Yes, I talked to the landlord, and he doesn't have an issue with that.
All right, so you'd have plenty of parking for that.
Plenty of parking.
By seeing your menu here, it almost looks like you're gonna be open kind of all the time during normal business hours.
All the time.
Okay, but if you're promoting yourself as a, I saw it as a sports grill, that's not too far from what we usually call a bar or a tavern. I'm a little concerned that you get started as a sports grill and people start coming there and buying bottled beer and suddenly we have a tavern use. How are you gonna prevent that?
Well, the thing is, this is, like I say, this is one of the menus, but it's not gonna be like a sport thing, it's gonna be more like a fam, still like family restaurant, family comes in.
So, so you're saying that, that the menu doesn't reflect what the name of your business is gonna be?
No.
You're, you're, you're not calling this the Sports Grill?
No.
Oh, okay.
This is just some other stuff that he's been working on, and also I'm gonna add seafood in part also, stuff from La Hacienda that we have.
Okay, and if you have, if you have certain receptions, you might bring in a live band once in a while, I'm guessing.
Yes.
Yes, and you heard some of our discussions, we've had some problems with, with taverns that got conditional use permits, and the live music even inside the building was still too loud outside the building, even off the property. If, if we told you we might want to put a limit on, on the amount of sound in the building, would you be okay with that?
Yes, I'd be okay with that, and also, also the contracts, they'll be done by, by midnight.
To, all right, yeah, so everything be, would be done by, by midnight, okay. And I know you have some separation there from the apartments and, and, you know, the last few years, things have operated very well there, it's always been busy, so.
Thank you.
Okay, great.
Any other questions?
I do, my concern is, is that I'm hearing that it's a restaurant, does it have the grease interceptor, does it have all of that?
All that.
Okay, so, I, I'm hearing you say it's a restaurant, but then the restaurant will close and you're gonna have special events there? So, there won't really be regular hours?
There's gonna be regular hours, Monday through Friday is gonna be our regular hours for the restaurant, eleven AM to ten, to ten PM.
Okay.
And which is weekends, Saturday and Sunday, is gonna be for, for banquets.
So, no restaurant during the weekend?
Certain time into, into, we're trying to figure it out around six or, or seven.
Okay.
Because it's still a, a different, the kitchen and everything is, is separate from, from the.
So, if somebody, if I have a wedding reception there, does the food come from your place or would the food be catered?
We, we're gonna be able to do it because we keep in the kitchen, we keep in everything.
So, on the weekends, you just have the restaurant kind of open for lunch, early afternoon, evenings on the weekend, it would just be private party for the private reception for the whole building, is that right?
For the whole building, yes.
Does that make sense, Linda?
That makes sense, it's just a little unusual and I'm, I'm, I'm just not.
As an area resident, I'll just have to get used to that, to know when I can come down and just have lunch.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else here to speak in support? Anybody here to speak in opposition? Any last questions for staff? Very none, we'll close the public portion and go to board decision.
Well, can, can we add in that eighty-five decibel language? Okay.
And where are you measuring that at? At the door?
Inside, do we have good enough langy, language from the thirsty Scotsman, sportsman to do that?
Yeah.
Can, can we cut and paste that language?
I could, I don't have that with me.
Is it the sportsman or the Scotsman, which is it? I was right.
Don't trust me.
Five bucks, five bucks.
Take an IOU, I'll pay you next Tuesday.
Hammered, okay, I just wanted to put that out there for discussion, that, that while we'd have the intent here, we've got some good language from previous cases.
Do you understand what we're saying here? Staff, I just want to make sure you know what we're doing. Because we've been challenged in the past, we want to make sure that the sound level doesn't get too loud. Doesn't sound to me, and I don't know if, if Mel, you're thinking.
I don't think.
I don't think you're gonna fall into that category, but what we're gonna do is, we want to make sure that, let's say, you sell the business, see, this, this conditional use is gonna stay there, so we're gonna say, we don't want anything louder than eighty-five decibels, and that's pretty darn loud.
Yeah.
So, if you're comfortable with that, I mean.
I got to with that, plus it's a brick building.
Yes, yeah.
It's a brick building.
Yeah, he, you, you can still have a live band, you could even have amplified sound, but if you have an ACDC concert, that might be different, so.
Okay.
We want to agree to that.
Very good, thank you, just want to make sure you understood what we were saying.
Yep, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, so how about if I, if you'll help me out here, I'll make a motion to approve the conditional use permit subject to the conditions as presented by staff in items one through eleven, and we'd like to add an amendment, an additional condition to limit noise levels within the building to no greater than eighty-five decibels with language commensurate to a previous location we had at Southwest Ninth and McKinley.
Very good, who are you seconding? They moved in second, is there any further discussion? All's in favor, raise your hand, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries six to nothing, you're ready to go. I think we can get one more in here, item ten is a variance in exception at eighteen-twenty-one High Street.
There's a number of communications I'm gonna pass around, some of them are based on the people that got notified, other ones are interests in the neighborhood, and so. At the end, I'll show you the map, based on the actual response cards that are. The subject property is a very small, I would say, and that's why we're here, platted lot, it might even be hard to see on the map. It's just west of the Stockbridge Apartments that were built by Hatch Development, if you're familiar with those on High Street, block north of Ingersoll, so you have G and L Clothing here, this is the empty.
Crescent.
Benson's used lot, this is Simonsen and Associates, the former Stiber's location, I believe. To give you some bearings here, this is Ingersoll Square, multifamily, commercial along Ingersoll. So, and then to the north, you'd, you have the Sherman Hill Historic District, and that, the boundary to that is actually to the north of this property. So, this property does not rest within the historic district boundaries, so that's important to understand. That we would look at this entirely differently based on the design if that was the case. What's being proposed has, causes a number of variances just because of the types of setbacks. Being a lot of record, it does basically allow single-family use regardless of the size, but it, and then it gets to enjoy the stipulations applied to a lot of record, however, even with those stipulations, it still needs some relief. So, there, if you, there ends up being a number of appeals, variance of the two-thousand-seven-hundred-eighty-one square feet less than the minimum required five-thousand square feet of lot area for a single-family dwelling, and that's based on commercial district standards, not residential district standards. Exception of eleven feet less than the minimum, twenty feet front yard along the south property line from High Street, maybe I'll pull out the map here so you can see the, what causes this, and the layout. So, the total area of the lot itself is, is undersized, and then eleven feet less than the required twenty-five feet from the High Street property line, which is here, and that would be measured to the front of the dwelling. Exception of one foot less than the required five-foot side yard setback from both the east and west, so it, it ends up having four-foot side yards instead of five-foot side yards from the east and west property lines, side property lines. Two feet less than the minimum required, ten foot total, so that's the aggregate of both of them together. Four feet less than the minimum required, ten foot from the north rear property line, so it brings it down to six feet on the north. Exception of the single-family residential design guideline that requires a minimum three-twelve roof pitch. If you look at the elevations on this, we have a, more of a contemporary design with a, it's not a flat roof, but it does have a shed roof that has a shallow pitch on it. And then a minimum requirement that any single-family dwelling be twenty-four feet wide, in this case, that's twenty feet wide. And it's important to understand that when we developed the minimum family design guidelines for single-family, they were trying to come up with standards that would prevent a twenty-foot-wide pre-manufactured dwelling to be dropped on a, on a residential parcel in any neighborhood, so. In this case, we are definitely talking about an architect-designed dwelling. I'm not gonna try to sell the design or anything by any stretch, but you'll see it has a very unique design to it. One of the things that the city is striving to be as sustainable, so we're starting to see designs of this type to try to make use of properties that would otherwise not be used for residential use. It's only one, one unit, so it's not trying to increase density, I think some of the concerns you might see in the, in the cards is that uncertainty about whether this would convert to a multifamily, I think if that was the case, there would, you would be back in front of you because multifamily has even bigger setbacks and things that would have to come into play, area, everything. And then it would also require a site plan that would go to the Plan and Zoning Commission as well, if that was the case. So, I don't know if that's a real. So I don't know if that's a real sound concern, that it would become multifamily, I think what it is doing is trying to design within the constraints to allow a functional single-family use. It does have a garage that would enter through the front, but it's more, it's kind of embedded in the design, so it's not, it doesn't dominate the design, so when we talk about snout houses that have the garage sticking off the front, well, this is in the front, but it sits underneath, it's tucked under, not unlike some older neighborhood houses, where you see a tuck-under single-family garage. So staff looked at this under the variance criteria, and we looked at other dwellings around the neighborhood, certainly Sherman Hill actually has a number of examples of the flat roof design in double houses and other types of dwellings that are in that neighborhood, and that has a very eclectic mix of designs overall for residential in that neighborhood, so we didn't think this was inappropriate to kind of develop this contemporary design that tried to maximize the site and function as a single-family dwelling. So we're in favor of the recommendation, subject to making sure everything complies with building code, because when we do get close to property lines, we want to make sure fire separations are adequate, and we're preserving the safety of the other dwellings which are in very close proximity, and that any dwelling shall be constructed in substantial compliance with the designs that you see here. And that they have no exposed metal fasteners on the metal paneling, because we don't want to have long-term rust and maintenance. I think you would see that typical, where we've allowed, even in our commercial and industrial PUDs and PVPs, we've had design guidelines that would not allow exposed metal fasteners, so that's typical to try to avoid that in a residential dwelling, too. Are there any questions at this point? I do want to, I guess I should go back, one of the neighbors did supply some other photos besides the ones that I have in the site visit. This is the house that would be raised on the property, and it is also a house that takes up a large footprint on the site, and would probably, if it were built just like it is, would need relief as well today. It's very close to that house to the west, in fact, it may even be closer than what would be proposed, if not the same. This is looking just directly to the east, so you can see, you have a three-story, flat-roof designed multifamily structure that goes right to the street with stoops, so in terms of the streetscape and the urban design of it, we're not creating something unusual by plunking this house down and, you know, creating some kind of dwelling that's too close compared to the other dwellings right next door, it's zero lot line, basically. This is an example, Jason took a picture of the, a flat-roof design just up at the hill, into Sherman Hill, that's being redone, so you can see that, you know, flat roof right next to a hip-roof design is very typical in that neighborhood, it's not, it doesn't have a homogeneous character to it, it's very eclectic already as a neighborhood, so I think that that is, has a lot to bear on looking at it in this place. These are the perspectives that were submitted, so you can get a three-dimensional kind of sense of what's being proposed. And this will be from the rear. And one more from the west. And I'll leave these here if the appellate wants to go into more detail on that. The cards that I passed around, this is the results. There are the two objections from the commercial properties to the south.
Yes, Mel? Sure.
Eric, there were some, pardon me, there were some concerns on the comment cards of, well, what's to prevent this from turning into a rental dwelling or a multifamily rental, I think specifically? Is there any?
There isn't anything to prevent that, the C2 zoning allows that use, my guess, my sense is, this as its own property wouldn't happen that way.
Right.
It would take an assembly of additional land to make something like that work.
Or they'd have to come in and renovate a new building to make it suitable for multifamily.
Even if they converted this building as proposed to multifamily, the building codes make that very difficult in terms of bedroom sizes, et cetera, but also, it would come back to the board because the lot area per dwelling unit would drive it, the setback for a multifamily structure is even greater than what it would be for a single-family
And as a C2, would we get into parking issues as well, that they have to provide sufficient parking for tenants?
Yeah, C2 requires one and a half spaces per dwelling unit, whereas a single-family just requires the one and it can be attached, which is the tuck-under garage.
And I don't personally have a concern with that, but some of the comment cards, which are some pretty good business people in the area, we're a little bit concerned about that.
Yeah, and some of that's just not having a full understanding of what our ordinance does allow, so I don't want to discount some of their concerns, but...
Sure, 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 but to talk through them here quickly, I think helps.
Yeah, I think the board has a little more familiarity with what they would face if they were trying to accomplish that.
Got it, thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Thanks, Eric. Applicant or representative of the applicant?
Oh, I was going to pass around these photos, the neighbor wanted to, wasn't going to be here, but wanted to give a sense of the proximity, I think they've staked out where the building, or where the property line would sit, and to give you a sense of where that dwelling would sit from there.
Was the neighbor okay with...
No, I think that...
They wanted to say...
Yeah, I think they had some issues, it would be this property owner right here, which there's another single-family house that faces west onto 19th Street, so...
Thanks, Eric.
Hello, everybody, Matt Connolly, 3105, 34th Place, Beverdale, 50310. Thank you to the city staff so far for their recommendations, and we went above and beyond the call of duty here, and went through a pre-code review with the guys there over the plans we have drawn so far. Also, good to see everybody again for the second time, third time, and...
And this isn't about Swart Road?
Really, I'm going to let everybody else talk here, I can address issues later, but this is, we have other letters of support, I don't know that you guys have seen them from three other, five other letters of support, I don't know that made it to you guys or not.
No, I just got one.
Did you get the one from Simon Rivers?
Two in that, is that one of, yeah, oh yeah, that, okay.
Yep, Chadon, Jack, and Anthony Lamo, all own businesses and reside in the area real close, same with Ryan Galloway as well.
Right.
And, you know, really, I'll just say this, that for me, this is living the dream, this is improving the city of Des Moines in great fashion here, and we also got some other dreams involved with Jamie Sweet Design, he's got an awesome opportunity here, and Bethany will talk briefly as well.
All right, ladies and gentlemen of the board, my name is Jamie Malloy, 3937 Muskogee, Des Moines. When Craig and Bethany decided it was time to move out of their loft downtown, they wanted to stay downtown and to build a new home, and they went to Matt with Generation Green Builders and Iowa Realty to find an urban property in the city, which is not very easy to find, as you probably know. I came on board when they got the opportunity to purchase this house on High Street, and they wanted to design a contemporary infill home that reflected their eclectic and somewhat industrial style, and the site, as Eric mentioned, is outside of the historic district, the Sherman Hill, and it faces south, I'll show you a picture. This is a view from Ingersoll, so it faces south towards the commercial buildings and the condos, and we thought this would be an interesting setting for our collective vision of the property. Obviously, with the house being there, we have to demolish it, the budget for the new house is very tight, and the house is extremely compact, so I think, I can show you the plans and you'll see that any concern of a multifamily dwelling is probably going to be alleviated there. This is, the house is about 2,000 square feet, and it's three stories of living space over the tuck-under garage, which is a tandem, so we can get all the parking inside. As Eric talked about, the style of house is contemporary, and we've proposed durable low-maintenance materials, including cement board siding and pre-finished metal siding, which I'll talk about a little bit later. I think Eric did a good job of explaining the site, but it came with many challenges, including the width, the size, the setbacks, and the topography, and we worked from the start to fit the existing house within the footprint of the house that was, or, fit the new house within the footprint of the existing house that was there. So it was roughly 20 foot by 40 foot, and we've tried to maximize all the setbacks to the greatest extent possible. We've, well, we're asking for a front yard setback, which takes us to the stair, this is just a retaining wall and exterior stair, the actual front of the house is about 21 foot from the property line, and it aligns with the house next door, with the mass of the house next door. The sides, we kept four foot, that allows us to have openings within the fire rating, within the code, so, and we've worked closely with the staff, I think, in the placement of this house, to try to maximize the setbacks to the best of our ability. We appreciate the recommendation for approval on the setback in zoning, and we appreciate your consideration for approval. I would like to ask that you consider striking the language in condition number two, that requires the fasteners for the metal siding not be exposed. Obviously, we prefer a concealed fastening system, but it looks like right now, that's going to be cost prohibitive, and we've at least got some initial pricing, and it looks like the exposed fasteners for the roof and siding is going to be about $23,000 versus $31,000 to $32,000 for concealed, which is a 30% increase on a project. With this tight a budget, that's a lot of money, and considering we've already provided an upgraded material over the cement board siding and any other kind of lap siding that we would use. I guess I'd ask that you consider, there are quite a few examples of buildings with exposed metal fasteners in the city, including E300 down the street, which is a siding that's almost what we're proposing, Gateway Market, which is a block away, has exposed fasteners, and the Vine Street lofts, which is down the street, and it has pretty much the same system we're going to use, it just has exposed fasteners.
And as Eric just mentioned, sorry to interrupt real quick, the projects that you just mentioned, none of them have rust going on them.
Sure.
Vine Street, the Vine Street lofts and...
And Gateway Market.
And Gateway Market.
Which I got to...
And gentlemen, to go to, yeah, there was, I just thought of the Rouen Building, which, you know, it was designed that way, but I think the staff's concern was that we don't have rust rivulets to show up. If we said, designed with non-oxidizing fasteners, or is there, do you have some alternative language?
All our, Gateway Market, for instance, is galvanized with zinc-coated fasteners. We're proposing enameled panels, so the fasteners would be zinc-coated and enameled to match the paint of the siding, so, I mean, I think any concern with potential maintenance is going to be minimal for this situation.
Yeah, because I think the concern wasn't that, gee, I can see a fastener, it was that I don't want to sit there and rust away.
Sure.
And, you know, streaky and look bad, so if we find a way to maybe put some language in there to help both parties, would that be okay with you guys?
Yep.
Okay.
Real quickly, here's...
Can we interrupt while we just got two more seconds? Can we get Bethany up here real quick? Do you mind saying two seconds? And then, we don't want to take you guys on too long, I hate to interrupt you, but in case we don't get to Bethany, I want to give her a shout.
My name is Bethany Kryle, I'm currently a renter at 100 Market Street in Des Moines. This would be my home. You're going to have to forgive my nerves, Matt didn't warn me that I would be speaking, so I had nothing prepared. But, just as my husband Craig and I, we've been married about 19 months, and as we thought about our life and what we want to do, I'm going to get emotional, and talked about where we want to settle and where we want to raise a family.
Take your time.
We thought about, sorry, we thought about moving, I am originally from Iowa, and I moved to Chicago after college, and we thought about moving back, and we just really want to make it Des Moines, excuse me, we really want to make Des Moines our home, we really want to be good neighbors, and we really want to reach out to the community and just be able to put down roots, and this is just an excellent opportunity for us to do that, so thank you for your consideration of this, I appreciate your time.
Thank you for stepping up.
I'd like to have her be a spokesperson for our city at some time, why, it's a great place to live.
Put that on the front page. Any questions for the applicants?
No.
Sounds good, thank you, guys. Anybody else here to speak in support? Is there anybody here to speak in opposition? Any last questions for staff? Hearing none, we'll close the public portion and go to board decision then.
I would move staff recommendations with the change to item number two, that the dwelling be constructed in substantial conformance with the submitted design, using exposed enameled fasteners.
Second.
That was quick.
Does that sound okay to you guys? Exposed enameled fasteners?
Isn't that what we're going to plan on putting in anyway? Okay, just want to make sure we didn't get 45-degree on that.
With enameled fasteners, for those that are exposed, we don't want you to have to do exposed fasteners if you don't want to.
Is that just for siding and roof, or is that just siding?
I just think, Mel hit it on the head, we don't want the, what you see, the rust stripes down the side of the building or the roof, so any, if they can use a system that avoids oxidation, I think even that wording would give them even more flexibility, but...
So let's leave it at that? The roof shouldn't be an issue, it's really just rust on the side of the building? Otherwise, they should look good.
Yeah, I don't think we've ever gotten into it with the roof structure.
Okay.
Give them as much room as...
Yep.
Okay, so it's been moved in second, is there any further discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries six to nothing, express route, like that. Do we want to take a break, folks, or do you want to keep going?
Three or less.
Three or less. Oh, all right, I just got informed we will take a five-minute break. We'll get back here at 3:55. Call the meeting back to order?
Mr. Chair members of the board, item number...
I'm 42, Bert. It is number... Item 11 is request for reasonable accommodation at 3312 Fourth Street. We've got communication on that. Does everybody see it?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks, Bert. Go ahead.
Item number 11 is the request for reasonable accommodation. We don't get these requests very often. It's been a few years since we've had one. And what a request for reasonable accommodation is, it's kind of a safety valve that the Fair Housing Act has built in that allows persons with like a recognized disability to apply for like a reasonable accommodation, so they can use and enjoy property just like everyone else. In this instance, there's a... The Recovery in Action Group wants to use this house for a home for... That would have up to eight unrelated residents. Our zoning ordinance require or limits a house to having no more than four occupants that are not related by blood. So if there's a family of eight people all related by blood, they could occupy this house. But in this instance, since there's eight individuals not related by blood, that's not otherwise allowed. The home would be used for recovering alcoholics and drug addicts. They are considered to be disabled by federal law. So they're wanting, I guess, the approvals to occupy this house. A few years ago, we had a similar case for the house next door, where the board granted a request. And they're now wanting to vacate that property and actually move into the property to the south. So I'll just go through some material they submitted. Here's the layout of the house. It's a five-bedroom home, two bedrooms on the main level, and then three bedrooms up above. I believe it's 1,800 square feet. Here's the decision and order from 2009. That was actually for 3318 Fourth Street. And this is the property to the north. You can see there's a whole bunch of conditions. It's pretty much the same conditions being recommended this time was applied in 2009. And I would also point out in your packets in front of you are the police reports from this property. And for the past 12 months, there haven't been any police reports to this property. So I think that's a good sign. I also included reports from what I thought were the two other Recovery in Action sites. One of those at 1007 33rd Street, and then the other at 2220 East 13th Street, which had the one police report. However, I've been informed that Recovery in Action no longer occupies that. So you can disregard the police reports for that site. Here's a picture of the house, as it appears today. Again, they're currently in the house just to the north here. This is the backyard. You can see it's already pretty much a gravel parking lot. As you can see, what our actions were recommending, that it be limited to having no more than three cars. So here's the other angle of the backyard. And this is just another view from the front. You can see the house they're wanting to move into, and the house that they've been in for the past four years. And then this is the house where they've been. You can see it is clean. It's not the most attractive property, but at least it has been cleaned and maintained. Then this is the rear yard. You can see they were only having two cars parked there at this time. Again, the rear yard of that existing property was clean as well. Consent map, we could get a few cards in opposition past the road, then a couple cards in support. As I mentioned, we've recommended approval. We feel they've met the criteria necessary for granting a reasonable accommodation. We've recommended a list of conditions similar to what was in effect for the property to the north. And I'll just go through these real quickly. One, the accommodation shall be limited to Recovery in Action for the single-family dwelling at 3312 Fourth Street. Two, the accommodation shall be limited to occupancy of the dwelling by not more than eight individuals, each of whom is sober and recovering from drug and alcohol addiction. Three, the accommodation is not transferable and shall be subject to maintenance of the City of Des Moines rental certificate for the dwelling by Recovery in Action. And four, the dwelling shall be managed and operated as represented in the application by Recovery in Action Inc. and shall be subject to the following limitations. A, two and three vehicles shall be kept on the premises. B, all the residents shall be there for at least 30 days. That's to avoid this from being like, from housing transients. C, all residents must be members of, in good standing of Recovery in Action. D, all residents are required to sign a residential application form, which adequately reflects the conditions of this decision and order. E, all residents are required to acknowledge and abide by the Recovery in Action House Rules. F, the zoning enforcement officer, upon request, shall be provided a copy of the resident application form and house rules, and shall be promptly provided a copy of any future amendments. G, no person convicted of a sex crime or who is a registered sex offender shall be permitted to reside in the dwelling. H, no person who has been convicted in state or federal court of the manufacture or sale of illegal substances as defined by Section 802, etc., in the past three years, shall be permitted to reside in the dwelling. And J, this dwelling should not be used as a place of assembly, meaning they can't have group meetings there, or people who don't live there come in to the premise for meetings or classes. Are there any questions?
I have a couple questions. I'm not sure if you can answer them, but I'm just wondering if there's, if one of the eight residents is a supervisor or somebody who's kind of, you know, controlling situations. And then, number two, what's going to happen to the house that they were in?
They've... In their application, they said that if they get the approval for this house, they would vacate that property to the north that's owned by Gary Oth. I can let them explain that, but I do know they plan to move out. What was your first question?
Supervisor.
Okay, yeah, I'll let them explain that. I don't believe there's a supervisor living there.
Any other questions? No.
Bert, I apologize again. I had to step away for just a moment. But when you gave the police report summary for 3318 Fourth Street, I'm guessing that this includes a certain radius around there.
Yeah, that's the 500-foot radius.
That's the 500-foot. Okay, so the... There's been 56, you know, crimes or reported incidences there, but that's not just at that address.
Exactly.
And there's some other intersections and...
And that gets up to the East Euclid Court, or the Euclid Avenue.
Okay, it reaches up that far then. Okay, all right. So it's not that the report was filed associated even near this... It wasn't like they just identified this as the nearest address to write on the report.
Right.
Which is what we've had with some of the convenience stores. They just write that down because it's the closest address. It's just in the radius.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
And Bert, the relief requested would be in compliance with the Fair Housing Act. And in that act, it's been determined that someone recovering from drug or alcohol addiction is disabled, and the condition is, say, sober individual residences or recovering from drug and alcohol conviction.
Yes. Great.
Thanks, Mike. Any other questions for staff? Thanks, Bert. Applicant or representative of the applicant?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Amos Hill, Whitfield and Eddy, 317 Sixth Avenue, Suite 1200, here in Des Moines. I'm here on behalf of Recovery in Action and Platinum Investment Properties. I'd like to briefly just introduce you to Sean Hunt. Sean is the president of RIA, and also an electrical designer with Wolin Mechanical and Electrical here in town. I've had the pleasure of coming before this board once before on a similar issue for Recovery in Action. I think if these folks were related by blood, obviously, I think we all agree, they wouldn't have an issue. These folks instead are related by a common shared disability, drug and alcoholism. These folks are recovering. Drug users and alcoholics, however, and that bond is really important for all these folks. Sharing in their recovery, I'm sure you can all understand, provides great benefit to these folks. Simply put, this is a move next door, one of the shortest moves you'll ever make. I've certainly never made a move that short in my life. I think that the reasonable accommodation was well-placed for the house they're presently in. And if we can get the reasonable accommodation for the house next door, which is the 3312 address, Recovery in Action intends to abandon the current reasonable accommodation at the present property. I had the chance just a moment ago to review the comment cards that we received from the neighbors. I think that there is a little... A few of them reflected the misconception that there would now be two houses, and that's simply not the case. That's not the intent of Recovery in Action. The cards, I think, also reflected a misconception that taxpayer dollars are used for this program. Instead, it's actually a program that relieves a burden on the taxpayers, because this is not something that's funded with taxpayer dollars. And I think that's important to point out as well. Recovery in Action has taken some affirmative actions in this case to do everything they can to work with the neighborhood. They met with the Neighborhood Association, the Highland Park Neighborhood Association, and notices were sent. And we received those comment cards. At the meeting with the Neighborhood Association, Recovery in Action folks volunteered their time freely. They said, "Let us know what we can do to help out the neighborhood. We're happy to, you know, do any beautification projects, some gardening, landscaping, what have you." And particularly if there's any older folks, any elderly folks that maybe can't get around, we'd be happy to come out and help them spruce up their yards, too. These are folks who are looking to make a positive impact, not only in their own lives, the lives of their co-residents, and their community. Looking at the requirements for the granting of a reasonable accommodation, you know, technically, it's a reasonable accommodation to allow eight unrelated persons to live in a single-family dwelling. It's a request made pursuant to the Federal Fair Housing Act. And as was noted by staff, these gentlemen fall under the definition of disabled pursuant to that act. We believe that we have satisfied the requirements of the Federal Fair Housing Act, and the staff recommendations reflect that. There was also a question posed that I'd like to address about whether there's any supervision in place. There is indeed a structure and a hierarchy for supervision. There are the residents themselves, the eight individuals who live there. And there's also a houseman to whom those eight individuals report. The houseman is a paid position, where they pay half of their rent. It's a gentleman who has been sober for a year now and supervises everyone else. The houseman then represents to the house liaison, another individual who is also sober, who then reports to the property owner and president, Sean Hunt. So there is a definite structure in place for these folks to make sure that oversight exists and that the best interests of the house, the program, and the neighborhood With that, I don't want to take too much of your time, so I'd welcome any questions you'd have.
One quick one, Amos. And I think it was referenced a little bit earlier about what will happen to the previous house once the move is made. Will that be sold, or...
Recovery in Action presently leases the house that they are at.
They lease it.
And I don't think I mentioned this, the reason for the move is the house next door to which they intend to receive this reasonable accommodation. It's a much nicer area. I think we provide some pretty detailed floor plans, so we're unaware of what will happen. I think it's just a rental property. I understand the owner has a number of other rental properties. The property hasn't been as well maintained by the owner as Recovery in Action would like.
I can understand that. I can understand.
And so they're, you know, interested in finding a better place for your folks.
So Sean is the owner of the site you're moving to that this action is for?
Uh, no. Sean is the president of Recovery in Action.
He's president of Recovery. And you're renting that from...
Platinum.
From Platinum. But Platinum isn't the, isn't the owner of the one you're moving out of?
Nope. Two separate owners.
Okay. All right. Gotcha. Okay.
Good to keep a card on the table.
Yeah, and perhaps that'll help with some of the other discussions we saw on the cards, too, so.
Any other questions?
So I guess just clarification. So when they vacate, if they, if this were to be approved and they were to vacate that one house, that house loses its designation. So it's no longer a designated as this type of a house.
A reasonable accommodation.
It goes back to a rental property or a single owner occupant.
If you look in the first condition, that's, that's what we did on the last one. So when you move out of there, you lose that reasonable accommodation at the place.
So it doesn't fall under property like some of these others?
No.
Okay.
Different deal, but thanks for checking.
I have one question. Are pets allowed at your Recovery in Action?
I do not believe so, but I would defer to them. They're not.
I just noticed on the, on the crime report, it has the address, and there are several for animal dog bites, vicious dogs. Would that...
Begin, it's because of the radius.
Well, but, okay, they just put down that address. It says 2220 East 13th.
And that's one they don't have anymore.
Right.
That's one Bert...
Yeah, that's the one that's been on.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I just want to know if they allow cats.
Yeah, and that, that was another note. That was in the staff notes, and it sounds like perhaps that's been corrected. There was a reference made to 2220 East 13th Street in Recovery in Action home there. They don't operate home there anymore, so just for the record.
And Amos, are you okay with items one through four and sub-items A through J on the staff recommendations?
Uh, yes. We're entirely comfortable with those.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else here to speak in support? Anybody here to speak in opposition? Did a good job the last time, Mike. Any last questions for staff? Eric, now we'll close the public portion and go to board decision.
Whose neighborhood is this?
We can move staff.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Is that what you're doing, Cindy?
I'm moving staff.
I'm gonna do something a little different. Sure you want to throw a second in? Get yourself started in the right program here?
I proudly second.
All right. Been moved to second today. Further discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand and say aye. Motion carries six to nothing. See? Your first time, and you already got it passed.
You're on the board.
Unanimous.
She's on the record, for sure.
Thank you. Item 12, we got correspondence from Drake. This is for, variance is an exception, at 2809 Rutland.
From the Drake neighborhood.
Drake Nei-, yeah, Drake Neighborhood Association.
Right.
Thank you. Mel?
Yeah. Not the Bulldogs directly.
The subject property is a property in the Drake Neighborhood Association. This is 28th Street, a little bit north of Interstate 235. This is Kingman Cottage Grove. So we're talking about Rutland, which is the street that runs east-west between Kingman and Cottage Grove. This is actually a little, when they downzoned the neighborhood, anything that was as built or had a conforming rental certificates for multifamily was left as the R3. So you'll see some little spots of R3 that are surrounded by the R160. So this property is R3. And so it does allow for multifamily use. However, the R3 does have its own standards with regard to how residential units can be permitted within it. So the appeals that are in front of you today are the request for exception of one parking space less than the minimum six spaces required for a four-unit, multiple-family residential use, which is what's being proposed. Then they're able to demonstrate five on the premises currently. They would probably be non-conforming in terms of the way we look at a new development of a new parking lot. So there's variance to the provision requiring driveways, parking lot areas be paved with asphaltic or Portland cement binder pavement, variance to the provision that requires curbing or wheel barriers along required setbacks, then exception of one foot less than the minimum required, five foot setback from the north rear property line of an alley or off-street parking, then variance of 10 feet less than the minimum required, 10 foot from the west side and from the east side, or four feet less than the 10 on the east side, two feet less than the minimum required, 10-foot width for a one-way access drive into the parking. So when we look at this existing property, you can see probably not an original addition here, but may have been an enclosed porch. This is looking at it from Rutland. This is looking at it from the back, and you'll see this circulation pattern that probably comes in off of one and then shears and goes out. So we do allow for one-way circulation into parking with 10-foot wide. In this case, they have an eight-foot, so it would require the two-foot exception. The other thing is multifamily doesn't allow the uses, the use of garage to count as part of your off-street parking. Only single-family and two-family dwellings allow garage units to be counted unless they're attached to the building itself, then, then it can be counted for multifamily. In this case, I guess staff has some concerns about reoccupying this property with four units and not putting the necessary improvements to make sure the parking is viable. One of the reasons the neighborhood, Drake Neighborhood proposed downzoning the neighborhood was an issue with congestion due to the number of dwellings that were converted. So part of the intent and spirit of the zoning ordinance is over time, as uses go out of conformance and lose their non-conforming rights, that we now get conformance when we do occupy, reoccupy them. And in this case, and probably a property that was considered too dense due to the parking ability to park it was gone, went out of occupancy, and now to reoccupy it is going to require a number of variances. We don't believe that these are necessary to make a viable use of the property. I think that we can achieve a three unit or we can occupy it with one or two units, perhaps, and conform to a number of these standards. So staff at this time is requesting denial of the requested variances and exceptions based on that finding. Are there any questions?
Eric?
I could show you here kind of the layout that was presented by the appellant in their submittal, give you a sense of how the layout came up with a number of parking stalls. Again, we won't count the garage. A seven-foot space wouldn't, wouldn't count as a space, because it would be deficient.
Where's the door to the garage to begin with?
I think as you saw in the, it was on this side.
Oh, okay. So I don't see how that would work.
So I'm not sure how practical, although at one time this was obviously used, I think it was configured as four units, but when it went out of use and whether that was a desirable condition that we want to perpetuate, I would say no, and that's what I think Drake Neighborhood is also saying.
Eric, are the surrounding properties single-family residents or are they all multifamily? Do you know?
I don't know without looking up each individual one, but what I can say is what I said with regard to the zoning, rezoning at the time. You'll see areas that we downzoned were the ones that did not have existing conforming. So there may have been some illegal conversions in here that we weren't aware of.
Right.
But the ones that had rental certificates that were valid, we left alone in terms of the zoning, so that they would have been R3. This one just happened to go out of use after that period of time, and then once it goes out of use, it has to conform. Now, R3 has, is not nearly as restrictive as if, if this was R160, it wouldn't be allowed because multifamily's not allowed. But R3 even still has some minimum standards for parking and it even meets the density, I think. It's 10,000. It's over 10,000, so it's not even a density issue. It's just whether it can viably park and make that work functionally.
But the home surrounding it, R160, right?
If you can look at it, you can see that there, you know, I'll point to the examples that are R3. Here's one. This is a little area where there's probably some ones that were built originally as multifamily.
Okay, I'm seeing your lines now. I wasn't seeing the...
Maybe I can zoom in a little better.
Okay. Okay.
Lighten it up a little.
There, that's helpful. And then you have the consent map to show us to...
Yes. Just to, yeah, we have one here that's barely in, and this one, these are, this one's right next door. One that's in favor is right next door, so I guess I don't know if there's any room to compromise here. We might have looked at it different if there was some proposal that would have paved a good share of this and looked like it made it work functionally, or maybe three units would have been more conceivable here.
Any other questions for staff? Thanks, Eric. Appicant or representative of the applicant?
Hi, John Capone, 3407 Cottage Grove Avenue, Des Moines, Iowa. To answer your question about, is there other rentals, like you said, the one right to the east is a rental property, right on the corner there on Cottage Grove and 28th, that's a bed and breakfast. The one right behind it's also a rental. They all have novel parking lots, and the alley behind there is just a mud hole, to be honest with you. My parking lot's much, much nicer than the alley that runs behind there. When I bought this two years ago, I bought this as a fourplex. I've been paying taxes on this as a fourplex for the last two years while it sat empty. I've dumped a fortune into this place. It wasn't winterized. I had to put in a boiler, new radiators. I'm gonna have just about $20,000 just in the heating system. We're going through remodeling everything, putting new appliances in, you know, and kitchen cabinets. Everything's gonna be done very nice. It's a nice addition to the neighborhood. The neighbor to the west who, who is in favor, one of the concessions we're gonna do is we're gonna move the fence over a foot to give us that extra foot on that property line, and I'm gonna put up a new fence for him at the same time, just expanding my property line a little bit that way. But, you know, I, I think there's plenty of parking, you know. I know you can't count the garage. If I knocked the garage down, then we'd be in compliance other than it not being paved, you know. And as far as the parking space being right in front of the garage door, it's just used for storage right now. But since it can't be counted as parking anyway, I don't see how that's really an issue, but I just use it for construction material storage right now. And I guess what I'm saying is for me, there's just no money in the budget for me to do the parking, the landscaping, the curbing, all that kind of stuff that they're asking for. And for me to knock it down to less than a fourplex, there's just no way I can recover the investment. Even as it is, it's gonna be a long recovery. I've got way too much money into this project as it is, so I'm just asking for mercy, you know. Like I said, it's, it'll be a nice property. It's been sitting empty for years. I've been paying, you know, the 100% assessed value on this property as it's sit empty. I bought it as a foreclosure, and I live in the neighborhood. I've got other properties in the neighborhood, so, you know, I'm looking to improve this property as well as my other ones. It's just that, that parking, there's just, there's no money in the budget for that. It's gonna be a huge expense. You know, I've already gotta put a new sidewalk out front as per the city request, new steps, and if there was money in the budget, I'd just do it. But again, we'd still be short on the setback from the alley, that type of stuff, but I'm just hoping you guys can work with me here.
Well, let me ask you this. If we gave you a timeframe to work with, you think you could come into compliance?
I suppose it depends how long it would be. Right now, it's gonna take me so long just to recover part of this initial investments.
If you'll work with us, I think we can probably come to an agreement on a timeframe, because our goal is to try and make this place look good, you know, and come into compliance. So I don't know, it's just my thoughts, so we'll see what the board says.
I guess that's my goal, too, so whatever it's gonna take, I guess, but it's just, it's really a financial hardship for me to do that, you know, anywhere in the near future.
Well, John, kinda, and I know this is hindsight, but, you know, you mentioned all these costs to do all these additional things.
Yes.
When you were looking at buying the property, did you not check into the applicability of these kinds of ordinances and permits and...
Learn from my mistakes, I'll tell you. Like I said, I've got other rental properties. To begin with, I lived at 3407. I wanted to buy 3408, right across the street. It was one of Mark Rattelli's, and that's the one I wanted to buy. My son's gonna move into that property and my grandkids and that stuff.
Sure.
By the time I got done with the bank, they talked me into buying four of these properties. I thought, no problem, I'll get them all up and going. Well, I got two of them up and going, and then I completely was wiped out financially, so that's why this one's been sitting so long, is I'm trying to build my finances up and getting this one going. Yeah, it was a huge mistake. If I could go back in time, I never would have bought this property, but it had a lot of nice features. I didn't, I knew the boiler was bad. I didn't realize all the radiators were also cracked at 850 bucks a pop. You know, lines, yeah, it was a lot more than what I expected.
Okay. Well, one of the concerns I have, and, you know, and I, I'm not here to criticize your approach to this, but you mentioned, well, all this parking and landscaping and having to pave stuff, like, like that to you is almost a, just kind of a pain in the rear thing, but that's actually what's important to the community. I mean, I could care less if you got granite countertops in there. You know, how this property fits into the community is very important, and when I see your site plan, you've discussed that the garage isn't even used. We have all that square footage that could be converted to parking spaces and setback, but you're, you're, you're kind of not giving us anything to try to help you in return here. If we maybe looked at a lower density, like three units, and get rid of the garage and preserve a little side yard space, and maybe look at a plan to get some paving over time, maybe we could get the ball coalesced from that way.
I really don't want to tear the garage down. We just put a new roof, new sheathing and everything on it just last fall. I mean, that was one of the expenses, so I could store materials and stuff like that, so I can work on the house.
See, 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 but now, now we're doing two or three different things. You've got a material storage building...
Sure.
...on a multifamily property where you don't have enough parking for your tenants. So now we're adding another ingredient to the mix here, so...
Right.
You know, we've, we've got to find a way, as the chairman said, to kind of work both ways here. I'd like to see you put something on the table so we can get somewhere here.
I, I mean, I guess if I have to knock a garage down, it doesn't make any sense at all to me, but if that would make you happy, I suppose I can knock a garage down.
Well, or if you could actually orient the parking spaces where you could use the garage for parking.
We could use the garage for parking, and I told that at the pre-planning, pre-application, but they said that could not be considered, so...
And, and you certainly couldn't consider it the way you got it configured. I realize that, but...
We won't count it for required parking, but if the board sees that as a mitigating to give the relief, that would...
Okay. So it's up for negotiation?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Sure, I mean, I can help you out.
I'd have to drive by there and see the doors open, and there's one or two cars sitting in there at all times, and not just more drywall or something.
Sure. No, we can do that. It's actually more of a temporary situation, too, while we're working on that property.
Sure. Right. Even if we wanted to consider that now, though, it couldn't even be an official, we, I really don't think we could make a deal on it, because you'd still block the other parking spaces. It just, it wouldn't work that way. We'd have to reconfigure a lot. But I'm open to other questions here.
And I suppose that would just be a matter of shifting, you know, instead of having the straight drive-through, we could just shift that over, have the drive-through where it went in front of the garage, and you'd have the same number of spaces, but then the extra two in the garage there.
Okay.
And I'm fine with that.
Okay. I'm interested what everybody else thinks.
There we go. Any other questions?
I just, I just have a quick question. Did you acquire all these four properties at once?
Yes.
Okay.
Huge mistake.
Well, I was gonna say, were there, were they all foreclosures or...
Yes, all from Mark Rattelli.
And did you buy them on short sell, or how, do you know anything about how that happened?
Yeah, like I said, I saw on the news how he was getting foreclosed on for 450 Yeah, like I said, I saw on the news how he was getting foreclosed on for 450 units. I noticed one of them was right across the street, and it'd been sitting empty for a couple of years, so that was the one I went into.
Okay.
Then they're like, you know, hey, you've got good credit and all this, so by the time I got done, they talked me into getting four of these, which was, like I said, a huge mistake on my part.
So, at least in the short term, you're wanting to use the garage space because you're in the process of building and doing all this renovating?
Yes.
Is it, okay.
Yeah, I've got all my building materials inside there.
Okay. So, once you complete the renovation, then you can be much more flexible in that garage space?
Yes. I've got another five-car garage that I use for storage. It's just, this is more convenient because it's right on the site.
Any other questions? Thank you. Anybody else here to speak in support? Anybody here to speak in opposition? Any questions for staff? Hearing none, we'll close the public portion and go to board decision then.
I'd need to see a plan of where we would be a number of months from now because right now I'm just all confused about this. I mean, if he wants to use the garage short-term for storage and materials, I get that, but even when that's done, how can people pull into the garage to use it if someone's parked in those other spaces outside? And we're looking for no side yard setbacks, pretty tight everything else. I'd need to see a plan B here, and I don't have that being proposed, as nice as John is here.
So, would you say that maybe we should continue it next month?
I'm usually not a big fan of throwing those out lightly, but yeah, I'd like to see John go back and do some real, like, here's a site plan of where I want to be six months from now, and maybe that site plan only has three units. I don't know, but, but, you know, we're asking for all these exceptions already on parking spaces, one space less than the six minimum, even with the exception, we can't, he can't fit the spaces in there.
Right.
So, and when I look at that picture, that's, that's not helpful for the future when we've just got a big gravel lot and.
Yeah, I'd like to see a downsized of this property. I think fourplex is way too many, maybe one too many, but it's a lot on a property like that. It's not that big of a house.
Right. Or if he wanted to get more, if he wanted to get more space to park onsite and use the garage for parking by us negotiating, because I know by right, he couldn't do both, maybe he puts the garage door out to the alley instead. I'm not sure if that's feasible or not. Okay, all right.
It's got a cable.
Okay, it's only got the one way it can go, okay.
Well, like I said, I think probably the easiest solution to that would be to shift parking spaces over to the west because the way it is now, it's a straight drive-through from the driveway, and then you'd have that open space in front of the garage.
See, and I'd have to have somebody putting that in a picture and putting it in dimensions because we can't sit here, I don't think, and take this appeal and make a recipe out of this to make it all fit. I'd like something better brought back to us, and I don't want to pass it off to staff either, but maybe they could kind of sit down and work out some, some discussions with them on some potentials here. I don't know.
Well, I mean, I don't think anybody's comfortable making a decision right now, are you?
I certainly wouldn't be able to approve all of these appeals with my own vote.
Yeah.
So, he'd just lose out completely.
I agree with Cindy, a fourplex is way too much. I don't think I will, can ever support that.
So, you're not in favor of a continuance then?
Well, it depends on what he comes back with, I'm guessing. If we continue it and he downsizes the shade and improves the, what the site plan per se, not an official one, it might give us something better to look at.
Well, I don't think we have a very good plan to look at right now, so. Let's go with that. We, and we'll give Eric some, if we vote on it, give him some direction on that then. So, on entertaining a motion for a continuance, and what's next month's meeting?
Twenty-second.
Yeah, good question.
Do we need to ask the applicant?
Well, that's what we're just saying. Do you understand what we're trying to do here? We're trying to find something that might work. Can you come back with the same, well, an amended appeal? Thank you. An amended appeal next month because I don't think we're comfortable making a decision today, and if we made the decision, it might be to not be the one you want to hear, okay? So, if you're good with that, let's put a motion on the floor to continue it to May 27th?
Twenty-twoth.
Twenty-two.
I'll make a motion to continue this item to May 22nd.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, raise your hands, say aye. Motion carries six to nothing. We'll see you back next month. Let's try and work something out. Yeah, Eric, will we kind, you see where?
Jason was the one that reviewed this.
Oh, okay.
He'll be back on Monday.
All right.
I'll have Jason.
We have just one more, which is 14. Yeah, 13's gone.
Thank you. Last item's item 14, special permit at 2560 Southeast 14th Street. Boy, they're all down your area now.
I know. What's going on? We're a busy part of town, that's why.
Oh, I just got one other question on the previous one. This.
You're right.
Rutland Avenue LLC, is that Jeff Clayton?
Sure is.
We, I kind of wondered.
Yep.
Hello, Jeff.
Thank you.
In case you're watching.
Should have been here in person though.
Yeah.
I'll explain this later with that.
Item number 14 is a request for a special permit to allow a farmer's market. The subject property is a monastery on Southeast 14th Street. It's kind of tucked behind a house along Southeast 14th Street. Here's the former, it's called Bluegills or it's not Bluegills, Mini Golf.
Yeah, yeah. It's South 40, South 40, I think.
Yeah, because North 40 is over in our area.
Hickman there.
Yep.
Yeah, so it's a religious assembly use back here, has a driveway from Southeast 14th Street and a driveway from King Avenue. Parking lot in this area here, they would have a farmer's market within a 100-foot by 10-foot area in front of the building, so you can kind of see the parking would go around, where the driveway is here, so it would be in an area along the driveway, and then there'd be a parking lot to the south, so we've been seeing an abundance of these farmer's markets in recent years. Here's a site photo from the east. You can see the building is down the long driveway from Southeast 14th Street, pretty large, open space area in front of the building. It shows a little better view. The farmer's market would take place in this open space in front of the building. Again, the paved off street parking is in this area to the south. We did receive a couple of comment cards in support. Staff recommends approval. We feel that this is an appropriate location for a farmer's market. We just ask that they operate in conformance with these four conditions. One, that they operate only one day a week from 11:00 AM to 5:00 PM during the months of May through October. Two, the special permit's valid for a five-year period to end April 24, 2018. Three, they comply with the noise control ordinance, and any outdoor speakers or amplified sound should be in compliance with a Type E sound permit only. And again, the Type E is for the background noise, so it's a pretty low decibel level. And then four, the special permit shall be subject to reconsideration by the board if it ever becomes a nuisance or detrimental to the neighborhood.
I have a question. Is there a reason why it's only allowed between 11 and 5? Because that's not really standard times that I've seen for other farmer's markets since it stays light out.
And this would be on Sundays.
Oh, this is only one day.
They're proposing.
It's actually their preference, not yours, right?
Sunday there or day of the sale?
We just did one day a week. Their application said Sundays, but I guess we were holding them to the 11 to 5, but we were going to give them the flexibility if they.
We specify Sunday or?
Well, the proposal says Sunday in your staff report.
Yeah, so I guess the proposal could hold them to that too.
Yeah, but I think Cindy's got a good point, just to reinforce it.
Yeah, just in case they say, oh, Sunday's not working, we really want to do another day, then we have to come back.
Right.
That was a restriction on this, so.
We'll find out from the applicant.
But, yeah, you could put them, or put it as the only word, just say one a week, any day a week.
Bird, I have a question. In the proposal, it says it would include signage along Southeast 14th. Now, one, they have some frontage onto Southeast 14th, correct?
Correct.
So, the signage would have to be on their own property and not in the city or DOT right-of-way, correct?
Correct.
And I don't see you addressing signage with any specifics in your recommendation, but what size or how big or can it have flashing lights on it or what?
Well, I guess if they do put signage out there, it'd have to be in accordance with the sign permit. I was foreseeing it being more of like a sandwich board.
Just on that day and that's it, okay. Because there are a number of neighborhood leaders on the south side that have adamantly fought temporary signing in the public right-of-ways, like junk cars for sale, I buy houses, or puppies for sale. So, if he's got a sign, we, I'd just like to know what the.
Right, yeah, it couldn't be on his own.
What the parameters are that go with it.
It couldn't be on the public right-of-way, it would have to be.
Okay, so as long as you explain that to the appellant and you're okay with it, I don't need to work it in, but just maybe give them a reminder of what the ordinance says for that.
That's a good point.
Okay.
Any other questions? Applicant or representative of the applicant? Thanks for sticking it out with us.
Four hours, 40 minutes.
My name is Willon Lockaville for the property on 2560 Southeast 14, Des Moines. For the signing, we kept open for discussion. Pretty much we use our word, word by word, recalling friends and family to come. And the recent Sundays, people working are pretty much six days a week. This is a farmer market, is pretty much homegrown or organic vegetable. So, we kept setting it at 11 so people can have time to harvest the fresh vegetable in the morning and bring it to market. And we make close it early because it's a Sunday evening and everyone needs to rest, ready for Monday work.
Okay, that makes sense, yeah.
Oh, you don't feel a need to change or expand the hours at all then?
We have the limit of 11 to five o'clock, but depend on if not, not many people show up, we may call it done early.
And do you anticipate only ever having this on Sunday?
Well, the goal is we, let's call it temple for short. We would like the family to get, to know the temple, get close to a temple. It's a custom practice in South Asia, and this is a way to, for the people to come to a temple, and we look for more members for the temple because this property been left vacant for over 10 some years, and probably you know that there's a lot of problems in the neighborhood, and we try to improve it because when we, last year, we moved in and tried to clean up and start to repairing a lot of graffiti around the temple, and people are still coming and go, and now we start to fence up and the neighborhood have been improved a lot.
Yes. Yeah, they've made the property look a lot better there. One question for you on signage. Do you just want to put up a sign the day of?
We will work with the city and if we allow to, and we try to comply with the city.
Okay.
If the sign not allowed, it's not a big deal. We still, we just communicate word by word. We call each other, ask people calling another. That's the way we communicate.
Sure. I mean, it's probably okay to advertise it, but if you just want to put up like a, a non-sturdy flimsy sign, it'll just blow around, or if you're going to leave it there all summer, it won't last very long. But if you're just going to put up like what we call a sandwich board on that day and that's it, if you're, as long as you discuss with the city what your intentions are.
We intend to work with the city and comply with all the requirement.
Okay, yeah, then they'll tell you what it should probably be made out of or what would work for the amount of time you want to have it up.
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else in support? Anybody in opposition? Any last questions for staff?
I just want to make one suggestion. Probably would be a good idea to add a fifth condition to say signage shall be limited to the day of the event or.
Okay.
Okay.
Appellant's okay with that? Okay.
Because you're going to get other requests from other farmer's markets.
Yes, yes. Oh, there's some of them already that put up temporary signs for the whole season. I just have to pretend I don't see them.
I know.
Okay. Okay, I'd make, if people are improving the Southeast 14th corridor, I usually like to support that, so I'll make a motion to approve the special permit for a period of five years, subject to staff recommendations one through four, and adding an additional recommendation that signage shall be limited to posting on the day of the event and shall comply with appropriate signage codes for construction and placement.
I'll second that motion.
Wow, quick. Been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor, raise your hands, say aye. Motion carries six to nothing. Get the express treatment today, so we'll look forward to that.
Such as it is.
All right, we got two things we got to do here real quick, folks, and I hate to have to push you down, but approval of minutes.
Okay.
I'll move. Second.
All those in favor, raise your hands, say aye. Motion carry, well, we got to have one extension because you weren't here today.
Yeah.
That's all right.
She gets to have her first abstention.
Yeah, you get the first, yeah, there's a lot of firsts for you here today.
I'll abstain from voting, thank you.
There we go. Five-oh and one, and we got to have officers again. I don't know, I didn't give anybody a chance. Has anybody thought about it?
Explain, please.
Well, we, for one, we have no vice chairman anymore, so we have to at least get one new one.
Okay.
Who are the officers besides you?
That's why I said explain, yes.
That's it, just two.
Oh, well, how about Mel? I nominate Mel to be the vice chair.
Second.
Wow.
All in favor?
How does the bus feel when it comes over you?
I am honored.
Let's see, can Mel vote for himself?